Okay, well, we're gonna call the meeting to order and get started. It's already a few minutes after five. Except we don't have Laura Lee either, she calls the roll.
I can call the roll.
Okay.
We won't go to alphabetical order though.
Okay.
Don Kirk.
Here, hi.
Stu Boyd. Amy Doran.
Here.
Dr. Alexander Lessen. And who are we listening to?
He'll be here but a little bit late.
Good.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Here.
Barb Cruz.
Here.
And then I'll recall Stu Boyd.
Here, okay.
All right, Nancy, would you please leave us in the pledge? I'm looking for the pledge on the wall right over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you Nancy. All right, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, but there is a change to the agenda. Item four point one, which is acceptance of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual comprehensive financial report.
Let me pause it. Oh, I'm.
I'm just. Yes. That will be moved to an actual full-blown discussion item. So everybody is aware that four point one will be coming down to one of our discussion items. We'll renumber all of that. And is it gonna just join?
It's already on there, Mark.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just, is it the same conversation or total?
It'll be the same conversation. We typically tee up these discussion items just for something that you'll be taking action on in your next board meeting.
Okay.
So we'll, we can just, we'll acknowledge it, but it won't be ten minutes, it'll be ten seconds, just as, as Mark was saying, we're gonna just move it to discussions, which is all right.
All right. I need a first and a second for approval of that change. So moved.
Second.
Okay, Don and Stu. And Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Amy Doran.
Hi.
Don Kirk.
Hi.
Barbara Cruz.
Hi.
Alexander Lessen. Nancy Rumfeld.
Hi.
Thank you, Laura Lee.
You're welcome.
And our next item is our school presentation, which will be Bill Reed's school.
So this evening, I'm pleased to introduce Principal John Kleiber, who is the proud principal of Bill Reed Middle School.
Indeed, I am.
John will be introducing and discuss.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to Bill Reed. I'm so glad that you are here. I do have a team with me. Got my assistant principal, Gwen Johnson, is here. I've got our two DLI teachers, Beathries Nadalas, and Edward. Don't say it. Valios, I get nervous and I forget names, it's a terrible thing. I did invite, I've got two students that should come with me, one is second unfortunately, but Levi Daily is here today. He'll be sharing with us a little bit. But I wanna get us started with just, there's a lot I could share about Bill Reed. This is my second year here in the school, and it took exactly fifteen seconds to fall in love with just about everything here, up to and including the people. Particularly, I'll avoid some of the emotional stuff, but if you're aware of what's been, what's happened here in our school, if you knew what this team pulled off today, like you would just be like, oh, my gosh. And so that's, that's what's got me here, that's what I'm standing on today, and they're outstanding people, and I'm just so proud to be their leader and represent them today. But I'm gonna focus all that energy in on dual language immersion. It's an area that, that honestly, when I went through the interviews for this school, I was like, you know what, I'll figure it out. I could speak to arts integration, I could speak to a lot of different things, but when it came to that, I was like, I, I think I can figure that piece out. And so we dove into it, and it's an incredible thing, and so I chose that as the focus for today. So, some, some of the goals for dual language immersion, this is Bill Reed and this is also Thompson School District. We want our students to be bilingual and bilingual. We want them to have high academic achievement in all languages, in both languages, in all, in all contents that they're working on. For us here at the middle school level, that's social studies and literacy, and intercultural and social, social cultural competence. There's lots of different ways that we measure that, namely here is through the Apple test, but that's the goal, is they're leaving our middle school and heading into high school, which is currently in play now. We just sent our first group of eighth graders up to high school, which is happening right now, super exciting. The story from then to now. So this has been now our fourth year in doing this programming in DLI here at the middle school. Began here in twenty-one, twenty-two, we're in year four of implementation. We grew last year from one teacher to two, so now we're able to split things to have social studies, language literacy, and world language offered in our school, which is incredible. And like I just said, we just sent our first group of kids, like a proud little papa, off to high school to go and be successful, and kind of watch it eagerly as they encounter that program. Enrollment for us, I was able to provide four, if you'll hit next for me. This is last year's eighth grade, so this is the group that we sent on. And it was a small group, but it was sixteen. This year's current eighth grade is twenty, our current seventh grade is eighteen, our current sixth grade is twenty. I asked about projections, projections are looking close to thirty. But Angela said, please don't write that down, please don't share it, because I can't like, I can't stand and defend that number. But I think that's a very hopeful number, and I think that's incredible. So I'm hoping that all thirty will show up. A program goal that we set for ourselves. So in every program that we have, whether it's arts integration, dual language immersion, we're like, okay, what do we really want for this program? And what I want you to understand about arts integration at middle school is, it's not like elementary where they show up and the entire program is built for all the kids, right? Every kid at Truscott is a dual language immersion kid. Well, no star, I don't wanna be unfair. But here, kids, kids commit to a level of, of, of programming to say, I will give up one elective for all three years to make this possible. I will stick with the same group of kids that I've been with since I was five to make this possible. Like they are, they are giving themselves to a program that it costs a bit, it's a little bit of them to say, I will do all this to, to make this possible for me. So one of our goals is to say, okay, you're buying into us, we're gonna buy into you, let's make it worth it, let's make our retention rate one hundred percent. Let's make this worth it to them. And I'm proud to say, at mid-year, granted, we're at one hundred percent retention. So sixth, seventh, and eighth, who we started with, is who we have now. And that's a big deal. So we're excited to be that far. Next for me. So enough of me, let me invite up Edward Valios and Beathries Nadalas. Edward Valios is in year four, so he's a man that's been on the scene since the program was initiated here at Bill Reed in twenty-one, twenty-two. He is currently taking on the social studies aspect of instruction. Beathries Nadalas, they're both from Spain, joined us this year, and it's been an incredible gift. She's just like this little sunshine here in our building. But she's taken on the literacy instruction and the world language instruction. And if you'll hit next for me, what I've asked for them to do is just take a couple of moments and give you a glimpse into what is it like for, for a DLI student? What does their instruction entail? What are their goals as they're teaching these kids in these independent, you know, independent ways that they're teaching? So why don't we start with you, Edward?
Yeah, social studies. Thank you for inviting us. Obviously, the goal is for those kids to be bilingual. And regardless of the success when they take the AP test and if they can get the bilingual, bilingual literacy seal, regardless of that, that they can be prepared for like a global war, and they know that there are different languages, and they can work with people when they are grownups, and, and see that they can deal with the situations where people have different languages. So we have Spanish, but we also have social studies, so they have a context where they can practice the language. Linguistically, there are four basic skills, listening, reading, speaking, and writing. So in my case, through social studies, reading, they have the textbooks in Spanish adapted for their level. Listening, they do it with me, but also in person, and luckily, we have this language lab in, in my class. And what we do is set an environment where we can scaffold the language and the sentences we want them to learn. And they are not so shy, because they can be talking just to one person or in a small group. So this is the speaking and listening part. And the writing, this year we focus a lot on essays. So wherever the content, it's through this second language, and they have to read, write, listen, and speak in Spanish, Spanish.
I don't wanna put you on the spot, but can you talk about what's hanging from the ceilings?
So yes, there are four classes in the district. One is here at Bill Reed. And there's a language lab. You cannot see my computer, my desk is over here. And what I can do is control and make random pairs, or groups of four, groups of three, groups of eight. And they can only listen to the person, the people I chose them to talk to. So I, here I have my whiteboard, and I might say, okay, let's, for example, today we're warm-up activity, they would see an image, something that was going to happen, so we're practicing present tenses, uh, uh, not present. Uh, present continuous sentences and past tenses. So something was going to happen, like somebody's going to fall, and they had to, I made some pairs, and they had to look at the image and say, okay, this person is going to fall in Spanish, va a caer al suelo porque eh, tropezó con una piedra, because that person stumbled with a stone.
So as you, if you, if you look at, so all the kids are wearing earphones in the picture, and so what, you know, is really well explained, I know John and I experienced it through a walkthrough. It's pretty cool. So like, Amy and I might be across the room from one another, we're both wearing earphones. She and I can hold a conversation quietly, just like we're sitting next to each other, but it's, it's only, it's literally just, and so as a teacher, he can randomly assort and say, Alexandra, you talked to Laura Lee, and Nancy, you talked to the officer in the back of the room. And so because you're wearing these, you literally can have a real-time conversation with other people in the room. So it's earphone and then like a, like a mouthpiece to, to talk. It's really cool. We have this one in four of our classrooms.
Yeah, and language depends on the ability to practice and speak. In a public setting, kids are nervous, in this setting, the, the opportunities for them to engage and speak and listen and hear, I mean, is just exponential. So what they're doing there is fantastic.
One really good thing that we have is that if we ask kids to, hey, let's have some conversations, let's discuss about this. I cannot have twenty-six pairs of ears to listen to all of them. And sometimes they may say, oh, the teachers pay attention to these two ones, so we were talking about our boyfriends and girlfriends, whatever. But I have a sign here, like when you go to the radio on air, because I can record all of the conversations at the same time. So there's no way they can escape their responsibility. And sometimes like, you know, let's listen to these two ones, let's replay it.
It's rigorous support, really.
That was not what it's supposed to be.
Yes.
So there's no escape to the, the task that they have to do.
That's good. It's a good tool.
Beathries, talk to us about your work with literacy with world language.
Well, I don't know what else to say, because Edward is plain and self-conscious, so I'm gonna do my best, sorry. So first, thank you for having us. And, yeah, so I teach bilingual literacy, so that's me, I teach both content and language. Because we're teaching what we're learning, Spanish, tones, and sentences, I mean grammar, vocabulary, expression, and all things, but based on our content. So we are focused on the four skills as well. But one of the, the main skill that I'm more, where I'm more focused is speaking, because we want to make the, the language meaningful. So we need to use the language as a tool for communication. So this is what we do in our classes. We do a lot of activities that involves interaction, participation, just to use the language in a proper way. So we are now focused this year in working on essays, because they are going to go to a high school, and it's good for them to have all the skills completed with proficiency level, how to write, how to speak correctly, how to listen, know about culture aspect. So we work in that way. So Levi, you want to say something about our class? We follow a structure that is good for you, right?
Yeah.
So.
I can just take on him next.
So, yeah, we always follow the same structure, because we, we know that the, our brain works better with, with that structure, so that's it. So we share the language lab with Valios as well, to practice our speaking skills and to make something different, we move it to another place. So just to make the things, yes, a little bit different, because we see each other every single day, and sometimes it can be tough for all of us. So we always do that kind of things. We also go outside to do some activities, and we move them to the library as well, so.
Working work very likely, and Levi, you can talk about it. Uh, in our case, when they write, it's very difficult for them, almost impossible to fool us with artificial intelligence. There's no way you can take, you can tell artificial intelligence, make an assignment, uh, write an assignment as I'm learning a language.
Yeah, that's pretty difficult.
So and after a couple of weeks, uh, they write what they can write, but.
Of course, no.
That's something funny, that sounds like, there's, it's, there's no way you can convince us that, well, this is your.
Yeah, so and the, one of the best parts, sorry, because I forget to tell it, is we are working together. So we are following like the, the same, not the same rubrics, but pretty similar. Uh, just to have like the same context to teach, to follow, they need a better structure, because they are, we are providing them with the same feedback. And I think it's essential for them, because they are not receiving different feedback from different teachers. Like, um, this is good, or this is bad, or whatever. So it's like, we are following like the same rules for correction, our essays and our class, and I think that's important. So it's a pleasure to work with you. Yeah, it is.
So let me get Levi up here. I did wanna give him a chance to, to share his perspective. And here's what I asked him to, to speak about. If you'll hit next for me. So Levi's an eighth grader, he's a student leader, he's an incredible asset to our school. I was talking to him before we started, is it allowing you to? It may not, and it's okay. And it was asking the question of where do you wanna go to school next, Loveland High in Thompson. He's like, he's dead set like metal, he's not quite sure. He's just the kind of kid that discerns and tries to figure out everything. And what I shared at the beginning of this is I've got a group of kids that dedicate themselves and say, yes, I will choose this, and he's a perfect example of that. And I asked for him to think about that choice, and say, okay, if you were to step in front of a group of people and say, you, you gave up some things, you dedicated yourself to this, why? What are you hoping, like, why was it worth it? What are you hoping will happen now that you go into high school? What is it you wanna take with you because of all this experience?
I think it'll be worth it to get the seal of bilingual literacy. And I also think it's, like, I can't quit now, because I've already been doing it for so long. It's just like a wasted opportunity, and I think it's.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I asked our other student, Goose, who, if you will, hit the next slide for me. The same question, and I wanted to be fair to her, she's sick today, she wrote me and apologized and said, if you have the opportunity, would you please share with the board my answer? And so with your permission, I'll read for her. And she said, I started the DLI program when I was in kindergarten, and I've loved it from the start. Middle school's been one of the most stressful experiences of my life. My brain is constantly retaining information, keeping track of all my subjects and learning a new language. It has got to be one of the most challenging things to do. At times, I've thought about leaving the program from the stress. But my dream to become a doctor made me realize that quitting would be the stupidest decision ever. If I can't handle learning Spanish, then can I really handle becoming a doctor? I'll be starting high school after the summer vacation, which means I'll get closer to graduation. I'd be going into apprenticeships or community service work for my credits. If I'm able to gain more experience by being, by being able to be fluently able to speak and understand Spanish, then I can definitely expand my social circle and all. I find the program to be incredibly effective and life-changing. Despite some challenges, and in all honesty, the program is doing a fantastic job teaching students what they need to know. So it's a great representation from her, and excellent, like Levi, yes, we have got you trapped, you're this far in, you better keep going. But I fully believe that, that this kid and kids like him are gonna step out of our high school, prepared and armed with things that most kids would be like, man, I wish I'd done that, the, the opportunities that you'll have. So we're extremely proud of you, thank you for that. And I think we're at a place where our teachers, Levi, if you've got any questions for us, we'd love to ask them for you.
Questions? I'm gonna start over there, Don, do you have any? Just zip around to see if anybody has that. You've done an incredibly good job of sharing it with us.
Yeah.
I have a question for you, Levi. Principal mentioned that you are looking down the road and you have lots of things figured out. So how do you see or where do you see a knowledge of Spanish as part of your future? And I'm talking about after high school and maybe even after college.
I think it would be really nice to be able to like, I mean, be able to use it if I get a job. I mean, and also, it'd be nice to be able to travel to different countries and be able to speak with the, with, with people there.
Sure, good, thanks.
Amy, any questions?
Um, did wanna ask, is your family bilingual?
Uh, no.
So how, how do you navigate that at home?
I kinda just speak English at home, but.
Okay.
They know that, yeah. Not really, like, I'll try to speak Spanish with them sometimes, 'cause they're trying to learn Spanish for me, but.
Right.
It, it's not, I need to get, they want, they want me to get better at speaking at home, 'cause they want to learn, so.
Have you ever found yourself in a position to, to interpret for them or to conversate, or, you know, out in the world somewhere?
Maybe like once or twice, yeah.
Yeah, pretty cool, huh?
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
It's something very difficult for us, the situation. I mean, Europe, overall, the countries in Euro thirty is something, ninety-eight percent of the students in elementary are taking a second language. Most of the countries, I, I took four languages. It's difficult to say it when English is your native language, because more than you can go everywhere and you can be understood. But not always. And we always try to, um, be very pedagogic about it, like when you grow up, you never know. One thing is that you understand some Spanish, and you're able to speak it and understand it somehow. The other thing is that you have to be able to send a very formal email, and that's this company that has, because in Europe, we don't have those big companies that you tend to have here, like Microsoft or Amazon. So you have this company that has a brand in Mexico, and we need somebody that's able to talk to the people in Mexico and send very formal emails and having very serio, uh, serious conversations on the phone. And this is something that is difficult to see. And also, they are very young, like, oh, when I grow up, maybe I would like to travel a lot. And South America, I know tons of Americans that, well, I thought that people on the street would speak English to me, no, they don't. If they went to college, maybe, but it's not. It's something that you like, we feel like, you will see, you will see when you grow up. You will see when, what, what we mean with this.
Alexander, questions? Nancy?
I just think it's a great program, and even, you may not know exactly what you wanna be when you grow up, and sometimes even when you're in your sixties, you don't think about it. Um, I think learning a different language, you're gonna be so much further ahead, because there'll be all these companies that, as bilingual, you'll be able to go in and, and just really make your career be what, what you want it to be, and I think that's great.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I, I just, Don, thank you, Levi, for being here, we appreciate the teachers who are.
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Building leadership. I'll also acknowledge and put us up Theo Orbison, Dr. Whitehead. So Theo and Sarah Asmussen and Tiffany Jones are leading district-level work. As you know, DLI is a K-12, soon to be pre-K-12 commitment and continuum here in, in the school district. And so what John said, as students matriculate onto the high school level, we wanna ensure that we are in step with the needs of our students, as well as the expectations of our parents and community. And so we've joined, in partnership with our parents and interested community members to continue to strengthen and clearly articulate the, the outcomes and deliverables within our DLI program, so I just want to note that.
Guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joining me.
Awesome. We're gonna get our dinner while we're getting going here. So this. So we know that four point one will be re, um, looked at, but we're gonna go to four point two, which is the proposed twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-five amended budget update. And we'll turn to Westy.
Yes.
Okay, as I'm sure everybody's aware, we have two opportunities to adjust our budget. After we issue it in June, we have a chance in January to do an amended budget. And then the following June, once we've pretty much completed the school year, we have a, a second opportunity to do a, a supplemental budget. And so typically, what we do during this amended budget is just adjust revenue for any changes we're aware of. And there were, there were two changes that, that we wanna talk about tonight. Oh, I guess I should start by talking about updating the fund balances. So again, when, when we're putting together the budget, we just have to estimate where we're gonna end the year. And so the column on the left there, uh, June twenty twenty-four was our estimate. And the column on the right is what we ended the year with. And so this is just adjusting the ending balances for those funds. Any, any questions about, about this piece? There, there are some large variances up there. For example, if you look at land reserve, we always budget that we're gonna spend the entire fund balance, all but two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we never spend it. So that's why you see an eight million dollar variance on that line.
Stu, do you wanna start with questions over this? Do you have any questions since we?
Not over this. I had some, a couple of questions over four point one, but I don't have anything here.
Okay. Amy.
Well, I think he still has part of his.
Well, I wasn't real sure, 'cause Nancy asked me if we were gonna ask questions, so.
Right.
Right, but this is just the first slide of his slide, I don't know.
Okay.
I guess because you said doesn't have questions, that's why I asked, like, we can.
Okay, all right, go ahead, if you have anything more to say.
All right, okay, so the next, next slide, this is the, the adjustment to the revenue. This is one of the two adjustments. So, so our PPR was budgeted at ten thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars. And when CD finalized the funding, it's actually coming in at forty-four dollars less than, than what we had budgeted. And so the impact of that change to us is, is a decrease of six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in revenue. And then the next thing is the funded pupil count. We are down two point eight FTE from what we, or, or funded pupils, I guess, from what we get budgeted. And so not as great an impact, that's a, a decrease of thirty thousand dollars in revenue. But what you can see down at the bottom, it's, it's a reduction of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue. And then the next slide, our, our budget was based on estimates for prop evaluations. And once we got final numbers, our, our mill levy revenue for twenty eighteen mill levy is actually gonna be one point three million dollars less than what we had anticipated when we put together the budget. So the, 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 the total reduction to our budget is one point nine million dollars, almost two million dollars. And if you remember, we budgeted to, to, to have a deficit of three million dollars. So with these changes, we're looking at a, a, a use of reserves of five million dollars.
Okay.
Okay, and that's all I have on this one, so I guess now if you wanna ask questions.
Okay. Any, any further questions on any of this? Nancy, do you have a question? I assume you must, if you.
I, I do in that, when I was looking through everything, when I look at the adopted budget that's online, the beginning, the, the ending balance is different than what you have up here.
The ending balance for June of twenty twenty-four in this left column? The ending balance for June of twenty twenty four in this left column?
Yeah, so if you look at the adopted budget on page twenty-four, what we're what we're saying is the beginning balance, which would be June thirty, twenty twenty-four, it says thirty-four, seven eighty, but your slide shows thirty-seven, so was there an adjustment in between after we approved?
There shouldn't been, what what is on that report should tie to this, or the ending balance, not the not the beginning.
No, I'm looking at the beginning, cause isn't that what the?
Okay. Well, well, this was, this was the ending balance for FY twenty-four, which would have been been the beginning balance for FY twenty-four.
Right, and that's what I'm looking at here, so it doesn't match.
Okay, I I'll have to look, for multiple funds or one fund?
Um, it doesn't, looks like for some of them it's off, but we, if you want to save time, we can just get together afterwards.
Okay.
Um, at the end of the day though, I did come up with the same, like four, nine, nine, basically five million dollars that we're now gonna use out of um reserves. My question is, on the expenditures, um in my RFI, you said that those are staying the same. But my question is, if the revenues changed on the SFA and the mil- mill levy override, wouldn't the expenditures change just by the fact that what's gonna be going to the charters also changed?
That one would change, exactly.
The, yeah, so the, so the expenditures would change as well, um and the expenditures that are referenced, is that a hundred percent of the SFA and MLO, or is it those two amounts less, um whatever a fee is of ministry, the fee that we charge them?
I didn't adjust expenses at all, I just reduced the revenue, just to be consistent with what we've done historically. Um, so I don't know, I guess, wha- wha- what's your question?
Cause it it seems like the budget that we approved in in June.
Right.
The ex, not only is the revenue changing, but the expenses will change as well.
The the expenditures will change based on the fact that we're gonna have to give more of the revenue than we did get to charter schools, for sure. Um and and there are other things that we're aware of, like the the stipend that was paid uh based on outperformance from last year. Uh that's another one that could be adjusted, it's just historically, those adjustments have been done for the supplemental budget and not on the amended budget.
Okay, I guess I would like just the board members to consider that when we're doing this amended budget, to me it seems like we should be voting on amending the whole budget, not just the revenue part. We should amend the whole budget, and then I'll share with you, I tried to finish it, but I'm out of time, cause we're, um, if there's a way we could get a monthly report that would show, here's what we budgeted for the whole year, here's where we are year to date, just so that throughout the year, instead of waiting till June, then all of a sudden we see
Right.
what the differences are, I think it would just, I think it would just help, but.
People would agree.
That, so that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Anything more? Okay, thank you, Rusty, it looks like we'll see you back up here in a little bit. All right, point four point three is the annual school utilization update. Todd?
Good evening, Madam President, word education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd Piccone, Assistant Superintendent Operations. Um tonight, just like uh the last six or seven Januaries, we're bringing forward the schoo- school utilization discussion. Um it just would be a strike twenty twenty-five, the transparency and use of resources. Um this is really a dive into our assets and how we're u- utilizing them. So moving forward, when you look at board policy FCA, it really guides staff to say, okay, look at the um previous um school, uh student count, compare it to our building utilization, and then work with one NPC, um and two, staff analyze if there's any considerations or uh recommendations to start the closure process, which then would enact policy FCA dash R. Um, so that's what we did, since we got the student count, um staff reviewed the numbers, compared them to the building um built capacity, and that's what you'll see, excuse me, that's what you'll see here. So you can see previous, uh similar to some previous years, we went through and highlighted the ones that we looked at in more detail. Um and similar to previous years, you can see that there are some that are significantly underutilized. What I will say is we dove into like, when you look at Walt Clark, she started, I'm sorry, well, no, I was starting there at thirty-nine percent, and you'll see this on the next slide, is we've also gotta be aware of the students that live in the bounded area.
Mm-hmm.
So just because it shows that utilization doesn't mean there's students there, they're just not currently going to that school, they're going elsewhere. So those are some of the factors we took into account when um when we talked to NPC about recommendation, about not making a recommendation. Um and then we looked at growth of the area, and then, you know, an awareness too, and normally if you go to the next slide, is we've closed, you know, four schools in the past five years, so comparatively, we've been, I would say, pretty aggressive. So we also gotta balance that out with the asset that we would then lose, you know, for really clever. So those are some of the factors we looked at, and we said, okay, what um what is the recommendation? Uh we'll continue to monitor those schools and the enrollment, the growth, the different areas. But at this time, it came back around that we did not recommend uh moving forward with any school closure. One uh note to make the board aware is, um, there was a lot of discussion in NPC about what does the utilization truly mean?
Mm-hmm.
For example, you go to Lincoln, you walk the building, you know, it shows only forty-one percent utilized.
Mm-hmm.
But you walk it, and there's probably, appears to be ninety-five percent utilized.
Yeah, mhm.
So we're also looking at modifying it to a um kinda a modified capacity, because what the district is doing is we're putting programs into those other schools, their space. So it is being utilized just within the programs. The challenge is that if, you know, say, Lincoln, we had, you know, two hundred kids move in, we needed space, those programs have to shift around the district, cause you have to have space for those students. So it's something we're gonna work with on a submaster or um an NPC subcommittee to come up with what does it look like, kind of a modified utilization. So we can also show the 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 community board, um that the schools are being utilized, just in another ways different than just, you know, sk- kids in that bounded area. So that's um, I'd say it's a kind of conversation around the state, you know, with enrollment, um going anywhere it has been, the trends the last few years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh quite a few districts are looking at this type of modified um capacity, just so we can see truly what what the building, building's being used for.
Yep.
So in summary, um you know, as mentioned, we're not recommending any closure, there's no action for the board, either tonight or in the next meeting, but the policy does stay, we have to come to the first board meeting in January, so here we are.
I could just uh also extend, um, so school closures are, if, uh the decision to go through a school closure process is is complex. And you not only have to take into account today, but you also have to take into account tomorrow. And schools are one-time assets, and so we can only close a school once, and once you close it and then decide to sell it, you can get the 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 dollars from the sale of the school, assuming you can sell it, but in many cases, the land is far more valuable than the building. And um let's say on average, you know, a lot of our elementary schools are in the maybe four to six million dollar range, if you were to sell that as a one-time asset. The year-to-year savings, you know, there's a belief that when you close a school, you you save money, um yes and no. Um staffing, you don't necessarily save because you you just shift staff, because you have the same number of students, you just redistribute the students into other schools, and then you shift the staff there. You are saving on administration costs, you are saving on utility costs, you're saving on custodial and other maintenance costs. But on average, on average, the closing of a school might realize about five hundred thousand dollars a year in in cost savings. Contrast that with when, um you know, our economy is such that we have um people not leaving their homes. You know, they're locked into lower interest rates, or it's it's um they they're holding on to their their asset, their properties. Um students are aging out of our system, they're matriculating out, but but families remain. And so those homes are not currently producing students. And at some point, people leave, they leave, they sell their homes. And once you sell off a school at four to six million dollars, to buy a new school is about sixty or seventy million dollars. And so even if we're saving five hundred thousand dollars a year and getting four to six million dollars, I'm talking in generalities here, but it's not like apples to apples. And so we don't wanna, we we wanna be mindful when we talk about the potential closing of of schools. We also wanna ensure that we have space to put kids to, because when you close a school, then you need to redistribute the students. Um a lot of our schools are neighborhood schools, and as you know, people purchase their homes in neighborhoods because that's where they want their children to go. And so when you move them out of their neighborhoods and you bus them to another neighborhood, they're no longer in their neighborhood. And so that's where there's, you know, um connections as well. So we've closed four schools, uh we've consolidated, we've combined, and these are yearly conversations, you know, these are, these are complex conversations. But it it may, in in districts we know all around us are are closing schools or wrestling with it. It's a very, it's emotionally charged, um and there's, there's a lot of considerations. And so um we have taken, I feel, we've been actually somewhat um um aggressive um in terms of closing schools in a short amount of time. I would recommend um prudence um in the in in the, during this time, as we continue to evaluate and and make some decisions.
I think it's important too, that we went, really went through a process with all of the schools that we closed. It wasn't like all conversation in one year, which is what some of those districts have been trying to do. We were thoughtful for two or three years, we talked about it before we really did it, so it wasn't like a huge shock to any of them in that aspect, so thank you, I appreciate what you've had to um share with us. See if there's questions, Amy, do you have a question?
I do.
Alexander?
I just have a question, a sort of a silly question, but I'm curious, does, do any districts ever like temporarily close a school off? Was that even possible?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it sure is possible, I'm not aware of any.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it, I mean, like I said, it seems sort of silly, but at the same time, it's.
Probably depends on what's the facility, what what they do in the facility, yeah.
Or could be. Right.
I mean, yes, since we own Monroe's, though.
Right.
You know, say, all of a sudden, two years it doesn't sell.
Yeah, I'd say.
Yeah.
So, with that, I mean, thinking about like, there's all the emotional attachment and stuff like that, that would be kind of a roller coaster for people. I don't, I don't, I'm not recommending it at all, like, I thought, I don't think it's a good idea, I'm just curious if anybody ever knows.
I hear you, you should.
It's sort of what happened with Van Buren, we didn't have plans immediately to use it the way that we did. When we closed it, it was because of low enrollment, and we had the building, and then realized that it would be a good facility. So they weren't like, it wasn't one decision, it was separate decisions.
It's a process, even that with Stansberry, is that we didn't definitely know, but with early childhood, it happened over that year, but it was a process.
Yeah.
That is.
So, Nancy?
Um, well, actually, you you touched on what I was going to ask, or, you know, is there a, is there a way to change the mark for flagging that is being underutilized? Because even before I got on the board, Winona's like perpetually been flagged, and so it seems like the staff, you and your staff have to go through this exercise, because we've said seventy-five percent, whereas if we said, maybe it should be, I don't know, sixty or fifty-five percent, you've got, you're, you and your staff go through that exercise and say, these are actually, but when you brought up that, you know, coming up with a way to do the modified utilization that might help explain better what the whole school is being used for versus, you know, the, just looking at just the s- strict number of enrollment, uh I think somewhere in there, there might be some way to make it, I think, be more meaningful than just, we see this every year, where we say, oh, there is the same, almost the same schools that are seventy-five percent or less utilization, but it does that, we always pass on it because it's just not enough to, so it seems like we should move it to something that would actually be more meaningful.
Yeah, we can look at both ways, I think, you see, even if you move it, the the decision point's still gonna be there, whether we're in seventy-five, you know, cause you're gonna hit those schools that are down into thirty to forty percent, so. But yeah, I mean, that's something we can look at as we go through this, uh pretty work.
But if you did that combined with your mod- your mod- modification, the same, well, it's at thirty-nine, but it's also has this, this and this other program that are, that might help.
Yeah, well, and I think, you know, some of the community too, that um, you know, there's, there's an appearance when you look at that, that, well, look at all these that are underutilized, below that, you know, bright awareness too, that there's more being used in the schools than what's, you know, when you strictly look at bill capacity compared to enrollment.
Right, I, yeah, absolutely, I think that'd be a good project to do.
John? Um, I do, I like the, I do maybe a column for the program, since they can move. Um, I just wanted to add con to this, because when I saw the numbers, my head went to like, oh gosh, you know, we've, another hard choices. So back when we were having more of these conversations, we were doing like street by street, like, how many kids could live in this house, that that kind of, that that kind of analysis, which I know your team does. Um, and we haven't had to do that at our level for a while, cause we haven't had to do this work in a while. But I do know that, that when you talked about growth in here, uh and the plans for some of those areas, I think a lot of them are over by me, and those are also the schools that are on the list, sort of in the middle, um or kind of low. And so, you know, if the, if those seven thousand houses or eight thousand houses go in that are planned to there, these schools are locally inadequate, all of a sudden, all of them are gonna be at capacity and then some, right? Assuming they're family homes. Um and with that said, I just wanted to add to the conversation from the um Community Foundation of Northern Colorado's Intersections Report. Limerick and Weld Counties are the fastest growing, two of the fastest growing counties in Colorado. And um we have, we're gonna have ninety-two percent growth from twenty fifteen to twenty forty-five. And so we're partway through that, where they started, um but really only a fraction of those people have came in. And a lot of that has to do with the age of the people that are living in our homes. And so, um, you know, most of those houses are gonna flip into families, a lot of them are family homes, are great family homes. And um that's gonna change everything, that's a significant growth, right? Like, we can't actually even imagine it with all the growth we've already had, because of how much of that is still coming. And that will be people with families. So anything we decide with just this snapshot in front of us, um has to take that into account too, for sure. So thank you.
Stu?
Nope.
Nothing.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Todd, for that one, and I think you're still on.
I am.
Yes, we are now moving to a school bus, correct?
I have, I have a question. Correct. Yes, thank you, Madam President, uh Kristen Mitty, our Director of Operations, is gonna come up and talk through uh this EPA grant that the board recalls. Um, a few months ago, we approved the, the board approved the CDPHG grant, this is the other side of the grant, so Kristen, I'll watch, let's do that, so like.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Kristen Mitty, Director of Operations. So as Todd introduced the topic, we were just discussing this a few weeks ago, um around the CDPHG grant and now the EPA electric school bus grant. So to start off, the connection with Strive twenty twenty-five, um four point one, this is opportunity to utilize grant funding to support our growth and sustainability, as well as aid in a capital refresh of equipment with those grant funds. So a little bit of background, this again may sound a little bit familiar, um but we have received two grants to pilot electric school buses. So the EPA clean school bus and CDPHG clean school bus grants. For this one specifically, the EPA grant, the minimum requirement for that was to submit for twenty-five electric school buses. Based on that, this is something that we are interested in piloting, but not necessarily diving headfirst into. Um so Drive Clean Colorado organized a group of, a group application through Highland Elec- Electric. We jumped on board with that, along with a number of other school, uh school districts, to apply for three buses and chargers. Um so we applied for that back in August of twenty twenty-three, or received that initial preliminary award in January of twenty twenty-four, and then just received that um subaward contract with Highland, which is basically just passing that money from EPA to the school district. And that school bus award was up to tw- four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, supplementing the CDPHG grant that we received, which was eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, so with this, it, again, it supplements the CDPHG grant, a hundred and forty thousand per bus. Um and that includes also the the necessary infrastructure, so the total is four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And this is a potential breakout of what that looks like for buses, chargers, as well as infrastructure for those chargers. One element of this is we have an aging fleet, um, so our buses and our white fleet, which we'll talk about through a couple agenda items down, um, are certainly aging. So, just to orient you to this chart, it's orange, kind of in the upper left there, that's our newest buses. And then it goes around counterclockwise to the older buses. So, for both our type A, which are smaller buses, and our type C buses, approximately half our fleet is over ten years old. So it's certainly aging, and this is an opportunity to, you know, revitalize that a little bit, three buses, um, but it's a start with that grant funding. Our contract has been reviewed by legal, um, there are several annual reporting requirements for the grant. We have to have competitive proposal process, US-produced, as well as a local workforce preference. Any questions?
Any more questions? I'll start, I'll, I'll tend with first.
You guys have just been waiting for me all day.
Yes, yes.
Um, so a couple things, so I, I'm still, um, really leery of this, because I know that just even the bus price, it will most likely use up the, the initial state grant, and that the EPA is what will have to cover that gap, as well as still provide all the funding for the chargers, infrastructure training, et cetera. Wow. I'm also a little nervous, because I'm not really certain what, um, the new administration's gonna do with, I don't know if it's Dodge or Doge, whatever it's called. Um, because on page nineteen in the Highland contract, it's very clear that if the EPA suspends or terminates funding, that when we submit for reimbursement, we won't, we won't be reimbursed. So that makes me, that makes me nervous again. Um, the other thing I also saw, and I don't know if, if you've talked with Mike about this or not, but on page three, it does say that A, we have to have a community, a community committee, and we have to have a website, so we have to have community outreach, we have to create a website and social media page to provide information to the full community about the project, and they have to be able to provide feedback. And that will also provide it district and our community members to be part of the Highlands Region Eight Project Advisory Board. I'm not certain why, is that something separate from the district, or is we would send somebody to their advisory board?
Great. So Melissa Carroll, our Energy Resource Manager, would participate in that, um, impact of the district.
So she, that's who will make the website and social media page, as well as the.
That would be that, the, for the committee that you were talking about, the impact.
And so are you guys aware that you have to also do the web page and social media?
Yeah, and I would say, um, that's probably the easier piece to do.
Mm-hmm.
But when you look at the grant, the requirements, um, it's total, there's a lot of requirements. Um, so both for the CD-PHE and this, uh, EPA grant, for, um, getting the help from Pam Ryan to make sure that as we go through this process, that everything that, you know, not only that, that we said, but all the other treaty requirements, the maintenance laws, all those pieces are kind of calculated, is it, uh, with it being a federal grant and a state and federal, you know, there's, we have to do those pieces, um, or we don't get reimbursement. So, um, yeah, I would just share with, I mean, with you, the entire board, is that there's a lot of, it's complicated. There's a lot of requirements to do with this. Um, it's not an easy project to take on, it's not an easy project to, you know, take this endeavor into doing this, um, but with the staff we have, and with, uh, having Pam Ryan help on the, um, oversight, that's, our focus is to make sure we capture all the pieces.
And just so you know, I mean, you know, I voted no on the state, and so I, I know you'll be surprised to hear that, what my vote will be on the EPA grant, especially since I can't get, you're not able to provide any level of really best guesses on that this is really, we're not gonna be stuck with a gap, and I'm so, that is part of it. It's also part of it is, all of this government spending, whether it's for federal, state, is highly inflationary. And just to know that spending this much money on three buses is, is just a good use of taxpayer dollars, regardless of which taxpayer it came from, so. But I appreciate you currying me and answering my questions.
Don, any questions on that? Any doubts?
I do have, um,
Yeah.
Do you know how many districts are applying for these grants, or how many districts have actually evidenced interest in this?
So I can't tell you the, the exact number, maybe Todd has some more information on that. Um, I can say just as part of that initiative with Highland, there are already school districts that are ahead of the, ahead of us on this, um, including Steamboat and Summit.
Okay.
Um, so those are two who are already moving forward, have the grant signed, are working on getting the buses.
How about some of the districts in our part of the state, are any of them interested in participating in this, or do you know?
There are some, I don't know the, the actual amount, but I do know, do know those other districts with like, elec- electric buses around us, and that's what we kind of used to help make the decision to go this direction. Um, so for example, Boulder, you know, they have, they have some, we, we work with them to understand what does it take getting into this, and those pieces. Um, we can look into the actual number, but.
And I'm not necessarily interested in, in an exact number. I'm interested in knowing whether we're out here, kind of as the Lone Ranger, exploring this, or if there are other districts, particularly larger districts, I don't mean necessarily larger than ours, but larger than Steamboat, or larger than, uh, some of the small districts in eastern Colorado. Because if other districts are also showing evidence of, of interest in this, this tells me that they think this is a good idea, and are willing to, um, take a chance. Uh, I, I appreciate and understand the concerns that, that Nancy has mentioned. Um, but I also think that if there are a number of districts that are looking at what we're looking at, they're obviously committed to, um, environmental impacts and things like that. So that, that's the, those are kind of the reasons behind what questions.
Yeah, I would say, realistically, there's a lot of districts, or I don't, you know, for this grant, I don't know, but a lot of districts are, have either done it or looking into it, or, or future things.
All right. I'm glad to hear you say that, because beyond this, this particular grant, uh, there are other districts that are exploring this, or have already begun. Just, okay, thank you.
Tammy? Vigil, Viget, right, Beeduck, Angie, busy? Yeah, Alexander started it. Um, next item, I think it's still Todd. Four point five is the approval of the contract as presented and the associated project, um, budget for Mountain View High School.
Great, thank you again, Madam President, um, as we get this up, just, uh, going back to Strive twenty twenty-five, the assets probably inventory maintained. Um, this really goes to that, because tracking all of our, um, assets and improve, uh, improvements that are needed. So just a little background, um, I call, you know, rooftop unit number three, but simply what's happening is the, uh, Aquatic Center in Mountain View, there, it's pretty specialized equipment because of the chemicals and humidity and different environmental atmospheres inside the space. Um, we had a unit go down, well, it's continuing on down, we fixed and repaired it, it's, we can't fix or repair it anymore. The challenge with this is typically you can, um, you know, kind of make, that typically, you know, here, you know, you could swap out pretty easily, the cost isn't that much. This, um, is just a little more specialized and unique because of the environmental pieces it has to control. Um, the challenge with this is we need to do it here pretty quick, because what's happening on the inside of the building, there is high humidity, which we've seen evidence of corrosion on doors and different pieces, um, so that's what's happening, that's why this is coming up as a piece that we have to go forward with, um, like, right now. So, um, that's the why behind it, we talked about budget, uh, and I think this might have, this was previously talked about, um, with the board, but it'll be a general fund, um, piece, and we have started some initial design to get this going, so we can get it done here, I see in the near future, um, in the next, might fall of twenty-five at the very latest, hopefully sooner than that, so. Um, at the business meeting, looking back with just the finalized, uh, memo with the budget amount, funding source again, and then the overall contractor, who's being taken with them. Are there any questions on that?
Denise, I know you're just settling, so welcome back, you're quickly beginning to start. We'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Um, Nancy?
Quickly pass this round.
Questions?
No.
Any questions over, questions?
That's a question.
Alexander?
Well, I can prove the aquatic shower temperatures.
Um, we can, uh, look at that, it won't help the structures. But that's good, thank you.
You, you have any questions on this? Is this where, Mountain View swimming pool area? No?
I.
Okay. All right, Todd, um, I think, one more thing.
One more thing.
And that's four point six, approval of leased vehicle contract. Yeah, it says, let's stick coming back to this.
Yes, and again, uh, it's from the duo show tonight, um, uh, for approval at the next meeting will be the, uh, contract for lease of vehicles, and Chris, looking into the details, I have a bunch, just a general overview, um, what you see is, candidly, we had to find a way to help our white fleet out.
Hmm, thank you.
So this was the avenue we started exploring about a year ago, and this is, um, what we're proposing.
Good evening again, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Kristen Mitty, Director of Operations. Also, starting first with the connection to Strive twenty twenty-five, um, so this project promotes, um, uh, prioritization of capital and human resources, um, providing the tools and equipment that are needed to perform the work in our schools, um, to our staff. So a little bit of background here, um, in facility services, so I do just want to make that distinction, we're talking specifically about facility services when we're talking about this white fleet, because our white fleet is, is larger IT and it's also a white fleet. Um, so we have fifty-eight, um, vehicles, white fleet vehicles within facilities, twenty-three of those are plow, plow trucks. We rely on these every day, um, a couple days ago, eve- this morning, starting at three AM, um, to keep the, our school safe. And the nature of the work can be very hard on the vehicles. Our transportation team, our in-house, um, facility mechanic as well, um, do an amazing job fixing them, maintaining them, keeping them going. Um, and also, they are certainly aging.
Mm.
So the average age of our facilities white fleet, sixteen years. We have twenty-two vehicles that are over twenty years old, and nineteen vehicles that over, are over a hundred thousand miles. So our, our mileage stays relatively low based on the number of years, because, um, you know, the trips aren't that far, but they get a lot of use. And just some pictures demonstrate, demonstrating some.
We've seen, we've seen them around town.
Yeah, then you also see them, we do see them around town.
Yes.
I'll help us item.
Yeah, cool.
You've been in some of them too.
Right, yeah.
We have deliveries.
Yeah.
That's true.
Center.
Um, so we have explored options to look at how we can get a bit more of a refresh of our fleet. Um, we have allocated capital dollars over the past, you know, we're trying to allocate dollars at least once, yeah, to get a vehicle a year. Um, there are times we're maybe able to get two, but the cost of the vehicles has gone up, um, just in case I think. Um, especially when we look at the, the vehicles that we use, um, we've got to put a plow truck on there, we need a service body, there's a lot of pieces within that. Um, so we began the discussion with Enterprise Fleet Management, um, they are part of the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative, and just looking at what that could look like for us. So through a lot of discussion, um, with finance, Todd, um, looking at a sixty-month term with the ability to pay the residual at the end of the term, or continue that contract, um, but just some other pieces within here. We would plan to lease nine vehicles, and also declare twelve of our vehicles as surplus, and sell those to offset that, those first year costs. It's after-market costs that add on the third year cost. So here's what that, what that could look like, so up in the top right, the total annual cost that we would be paying this for five years is about that hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The total one-time aftermarket cost, so that's just that first year, is eighty-nine thousand dollars, and that's for that upfitting that we have to do for our, you know, all of our vehicles, our plow trucks, as well as our vans.
Don?
That, okay. So I don't want to talk too much to chill around all of those, it's all available for you. So with that, um, the lease of nine vehicles to refresh the fleet, we would declare these twelve vehicles as surplus. Um, fair market value, we have, uh, Enterprise helped us to assess that, um, it's approximately fourteen thousand five hundred for those twelve vehicles. However, um, utilizing online government resellers, typically vehicles sell for more, because they know that routine maintenance, they're well cared for, even though they may not look beautiful, they know that they're, there's good ones there.
They're solid.
Yeah, exactly. So we would use those dollars to offset those, those costs.
Yes, two questions, yeah. All right, um, I don't have any, but I'm gonna head over to there, questions?
I have a question, is that fourteen thousand five hundred, is that total for all twelve vehicles?
It is.
So is that, and is that like, the total amount, or is that on top of, above the eighty-nine thousand?
Oh, so, so that's what we would, so if we sell our twelve vehicles, then we would get the fourteen thousand, it would like, again, it would likely be more than that, but that's kind of the bottom number that we would expect, that would then go toward offsetting the cost of the new vehicles. So, okay.
It's, they did, that is just a one chart, one type of, your outfit, the clothes. And the lease is separate than that list of the twelve vehicles.
Okay.
So we have those.
So the eighty-nine thousand would come down to?
Yes.
Seventy.
Seventy, or sixty.
Whatever, four thousand.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna do quite an auction, we're gonna get someone in front of the room and try to sell them, to get more.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's not very much, what do you?
Offering to us, I would.
Throw on something like desks and tractors.
Yeah, yeah.
Denise?
What's, what's the average age of the two?
So they are all over seventeen years, um, and all over a hundred thousand miles. I don't know the average age of those twelve specific, but I did look at the ages, and it's seventeen is the youngest.
Yeah.
Yep.
Graduate this.
Yeah, that's what.
This time.
Started.
That's a good analogy.
Um, so on the cost to outfit them, and then even the, the monthly lease payment, is the cost to outfit them that'll be offset by the result of, is that going into the twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
Um, that will be in the twenty, yes.
Okay, so, 'cause I don't think it was a week, for, so where would you, where will it go in the next year's?
We are, uh, cleaning that out of the, our, the, the, the capital budgets that we have.
That one point six, so.
That one point six, for, yeah.
Okay.
So it's part of, we've, just typically what we do is we take anywhere from a hundred, two hundred a year, what we happen to do on the Chris, Christmas referencing is buying one or two vehicles a year, and using that same budget, so we're just taking the same budget that we've used the last several years, and now just allocating it towards this.
And, so then the, the monthly lease payments though, where will those lie on, 'cause that's also not in the budget?
The, it'll come out of that same cap budget.
It'll, so, oh, even the lease payments will come out of the same cap?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, it might, might have to transfer funds, I don't know exactly what funding come out of, but it's all the, the entire list programs budgeted in that one point six million.
Is that how it'll be budgeted going for, for the next year's?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, and then I had constituent ask me at, so I told him I would ask. He wants to know, 'cause he sees, uh, district vehicles at people's homes, he wants to know if they are given, allowed to use these to drive home and use for personal. I don't know the answer yet.
Let's keep it.
Um, so we do have some on-call technicians, and so in the, in those cases, that would be a yes. Also, um, you know, our employees are out and about throughout the district every day, and so if it makes more sense for them to
To go home.
to stop by home, um, then to drive back to the office, pick up their vehicle, and then go there, then we do allow that as well, but that would be limited.
Mm-hmm.
No, that makes sense, okay, thanks.
Hi, thank you.
Please.
Here we go.
Yeah.
All right, um, four point seven is superintendent major evaluation update in process.
By receivers.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Severs.
I'm President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Severs, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources, uh, the same topic that Todd had a little bit is this presentation basically comes out every January. So the gen- just a high level, like nothing has changed in the evaluation process, and all of you returning from last year that they're sure, like you have experience with evaluation, so that's the good news. So I kinda go through this briefly, uh, Strive twenty twenty five will focus on developed staff in all job classifications during enhanced opportunities, the presentation will connect Strive twenty twenty five. Number three, human talent, as we discussed the process of the twenty four, twenty five superintendent evaluation workbook. So the purpose is superintendent's evaluation is one of the fundamental responsibilities of the school board, you can kinda read there. But the superintendent can use the feedback that all of you give in the process and the mid-year coming up to engage in personal and professional development. Excellent, so there's board policy around the evaluation of the superintendent, uh, process, so there's two parts to the evaluation. First part is, i- it's focused on the four areas in T S D Strive twenty twenty five, and then part, part two. It's like partial like. Then part two, it it gets into the relationship with the board, so shared vision and advances district excellence, advocate for public education, lead through transparency and strong relationship with the board. So it's just a continuation of discussions over the past. Past years. And then just the timeline, so the superintendent goals, the discussion all of you had with our superintendent August second, by November thirtieth, golden objective conference per contract. So per contract means compliance, obeying compliance with the contract that what the board and the superintendent assign, just making sure that we keep that in place. January eighth, discuss superintendent evaluation instrument, which is tonight, and then January twenty second is executive session for mid-year review conference, and the next board meeting would be going into the executive session to discuss mid-year progress. And then that keeps us in compliance with the contract because that meeting needs to take place by January twenty ninth. And the other part of the timeline is May seventh, review superintendent's evaluation process, so I'll come back and talk about the individual evaluation itself. And 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 not whole package, just that piece, because that is what would be due back to me on the nineteenth to move that forward as far as the summative evaluation of the superintendent going in executive session. On May twenty first for discussion about the year-end evaluation. And then that keeps us into compliance by June thirtieth, year-end review per contract, so there's three major time periods within a superintendent contract that, uh, the board needs to be in compliance with. So as far as the handbook, there's four forms in there, i- it's it's same, the only thing that has changed from the dates from twenty three, twenty four to twenty four, twenty five. Are there any questions from the board?
What else, I'm just going quickly to extend on, so what I would, I would share with you, your weekly update, uh, this week is an update on my goals. A reminder of what my, what the agreed upon goals and objectives were, um, as well as an update in each of the areas, so I'll provide that in advance. And then as a reminder, it's a conversation, so the mid-year conference is done, just an, an exact session is a conversation, um, um, glow is in the dark, uh, it's up to the seat.
Okay, Dawn, questions over, Stu?
Bill, refresh my memory as to what will happen during the executive session on the twenty second.
So ju- ju- just a conversation of the mid-year, so so basically, in instead of surprising the superintendent with feedback at the end of the year, it's it's always great to have a conversation about. Where where we're at, because it starts with the goals, so it's kind of the goal meeting, and then the mid-year is just reviewing where we're at, it as, as far as a snapshot of. These are the goals we talked about, uh, Doc- Dr. Schaefer is sending the board, like a mid-year of where he's at and his accomplishments of the goals, and then you're really having conversations around that. To make sure either our superintendent is on track for the end of the year of the evaluation, anything that needs to kinda change or anything that needs to continue would be a part of that conversation. So I, I wouldn't see having to come put a document together for that conversation, i- it, it should be a low-key conversation of just a, a, a check to see how progress is going.
Alright, so in terms of something that we're supposed to produce or create and bring with us to that meeting, there isn't anything?
There, there, there isn't.
Okay.
Just thoughtful thinking.
Alright.
Yeah, and and just bring in what the final evaluation looks like and having a discussion around that, because there's, there, there's basically like eight elements for discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Amy? Alexandra? Denise? Abby? You too.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, board.
Alright, thank you, Bill, very much. Alright, four point eight is the National School Board Recognition, um, Month, and Dr. Schaefer's gonna take care of that on the. Um.
I will recognize.
He will recognize this at our next meeting, yes. And then, uh, four point nine is just standard action consent items, which is what we normally have, Nancy, do you have questions?
Do, yeah.
On, on what?
The fifty thousand dollar contract.
Oh, has that been added?
Uh-huh.
Is it on here, I missed that, I'm sorry.
It was just added today.
Today, I missed it, okay. So what number is it, what number is it?
It's, it's four point nine.
Is it on there, it's four point nine? Okay.
Do we start with me or do I go?
Um, no, it's, we start over, over there, uh, Stu? Do questions over the fifty thousand?
No, not on that.
Okay, Amy?
No.
Okay.
I, I was just curious as to, it looks like originally it was gonna be a hundred and forty five thousand, but we had to increase the P O by sixty nine thousand. I was just curious what drove that, um, or is that something that Phil addressed?
They're gonna address, so there was the, um, and, uh, I'll answer quickly, Rusty, if you wanna join just briefly. Um, so there was the, the fee for the auditing services, and then, um, as, as we will be sharing with the board, we will be engaging with Plan Veran for, um, supportive services as well. And so necessarily they're needed to make, um, an adjustment, so Rusty, is that accurate or, um, the question is, um. The fee amount went up by sixty nine thousand dollars for the planning services.
And the question is, where is that gonna be covered?
Yeah, like what, what caused it to go up sixty five thousand, I mean, if it was a thousand dollars, I'd go I'd do kicks, but it's sixty nine.
My guess is we're gonna cover that, uh, when we get to the review.
To the six, okay.
Yes.
Okay, question, thanks.
Alright, anybody else have questions on that? I had recently put down here, it was, oh, I knocked the silver foot down, did you bother? Alright, um, so the next item is CASB updates, Stu, do you have anything for us?
I do, uh, but before we, we get to that, so items four point one through four point nine are all, um, action consent items at the twenty second meeting, no?
Okay. No, um, the act for, am I saying that right, will not be an action consent item, it will be.
Agree, dis- like a discussion of action.
At a dis- discussion item.
Alright.
Otherwise, there won't really be anything we have to, to vote on on some of these others as well.
The re-
Because as I think Todd said, there was, there's noth- nothing to tell you, it, it was just information for us.
Alright, so four point two then through four point nine become action consent?
Not necessarily, some of them will.
Not necessarily.
School utilization is not, the rest of them.
Alright, okay.
Do you wanna go ahead and disturb you know, um, P A does not give him consent, or do you want me to still pollute them totally?
We could talk about it in the gentleman's.
Well, when we do agendas, yeah, alright. Stu?
Alright, yes, even though the, uh, legislative session has barely started, they haven't accomplished, uh, very much other than getting to know some of the new folks and so on. I, I do have four items that I wanna bring to your attention, I have something I wanna show you, I'll give this to Dawn while I'm talking about it, and then it'll pass. By me while I'm talking and, and go to Amy. When we, uh, adopted our legislative platform, I had a conversation with Mike Housman that I had been at a couple of, uh, conventions and conferences. Where legislative platforms were presented in a variety of formats, and one that I really liked was one that, uh, was like a small book. And he said at some point, uh, we will produce that for the board and have that for the board to look at. What you've received previously is a typed sheet, and what you're going to look at now is something that's replete with photographs, that's, um. Uh, formatted in a more attractive way, et cetera, and it will give us an opportunity when we go to conferences and share our legislative platform. That rather than handing out a typed sheet of paper, which is what you've seen before, uh, we will have something that's, um, formatted in an attractive manner. It's all the same content that you've seen before, uh, so Mike, thank you very much for this, and I think this is kind of hot off the press, and I hope that you'll see that the, that the rest of the board members will receive a copy of it as well. I, I didn't know I was gonna see that tonight, so, that's great, alright. Um, the first thing I wanna talk about is that, um, in December, uh, I thought it was important for us to make initial contact before the legislative session actually began. With the two representatives and the two senators that represent the, uh, the Thompson School District. And I knew there wasn't time for us to get together as a group with them, so I met with three of the four of them, one-on-one, all via Zoom. I met with Representative Weinberg, uh, and Senator Marchman, who represent the Loveland and South Fort Collins part of the district. I met with Representative Armagost, who represents the Berthitt part of our school district. Uh, haven't been able to meet yet with Senator Kirkmire, she's a member of the Joint Budget Committee, she's a busy person. And we had a meeting scheduled, and it turned out that she couldn't make it after all, and so I, I do think it's important to, to meet with her as well. So first of all, I wanted you to know that I've established initial contact with all four of our, um, legislators. Shortly after I met with, uh, Representative Weinberg via Zoom, he sent me a cellphone bill, uh, this is a bill dealing with cellphone. He didn't send, he didn't send me the bill for his own cellphone.
You took time with him.
That he wanted me to look at, uh, and, because he was considering signing on to the bill, this is actually Senator Marchman's bill, as well as Representative Lukens. And the policy or this bill requires districts to have a policy for, uh, cellphone use in the schools, and you know, we've, we've talked about that. Um, I responded as an individual board member, I was very careful for him to know that, that the feedback I was giving was as an individual board member. I told him that I found the bill unnecessary, uh, we've talked about that, uh, as a board, I was opposed to the bill, I read it, I was opposed to it in its current status. I copied Mark in my response, he also responded in somewhat a similar manner, uh, to, uh, Representative Weinberg. I then heard back from him, and he said, thank you very much for the feedback, I may not sign on to the bill at all. Uh, the reason I wanted to bring this to your attention is they are eager, and I picked this up from all three of them, they're very eager to communicate with us. They, they want to have our feedback, they understand that, that we're the boots on the ground and that we, we have feedback to offer. Now, that leads me to one thing in regard to this, would you like to discuss this item at the January twenty second meeting? Uh, in order to take a vote for a formal opposition or formal approval, uh, that then I would forward to them, that's an option that we have. Uh, the bill is actually set to be filed on January twenty fourth, we meet on the twenty second. The other thing that we could do, if you'd like to, um, present, uh, our opinion as a board, it certainly could happen after January twenty fourth. There's, there's no magic in terms of doing it before, I just thought I would bring you this and ask you if it's something that you feel strongly enough about that you'd like to discuss it. At our January twenty second meeting, and then take formal action, either, uh, in terms of opposition or approval, so, talk to me about that.
Who starts?
I'm, I'm taking the fact that there were no comments, that maybe you'd like not to talk about it on the twenty second, and then we would revisit this at the point that the bill was actually introduced and maybe amended. And that they come back to the, to various school districts and ask for approval or opposition?
I, I was waiting for Barb to review, who starts?
Okay.
She's in charge right now, not me, so just.
Yeah, so when I said, talk to me, that's a little more informal than the way that Barb has, than the way that Barb has done it, so if you have an opinion. Uh, we can either go around or you can just say it at this point, so, what's your pleasure in regard to what you'd like to do with this bill at this point?
I think it's a good idea that if as a board, we're gonna say this is our, we support or oppose, I think it's a good idea, good practice that we vote on that as a board. The cellphone policy itself. It's like, you know, I, I still think that we need a district-wide, I know that there's some that disagree with that, but I still think we need a district-wide one, especially just for some of the teachers I've talked to. Um, my only comment to Ron, cause he asked me to look at it too, is it says, uh, you have to include, like. I forgot how it was working, like if the parents or the students won't comply, then I was like, well, okay, well, you, you, just, what do you, what does the state want us to do, I mean, you're just saying. We have to have a policy that includes what happens if they don't comply, and it was like, well, what, what is, what is a district gonna do, I mean, it's not like we can, uh. Send them a punishment of these, so, I mean, that was my, that was my biggest thing about the bill, is that I don't think it provided any guidance on that. It did le- and would leave us open, just, who knows what, but I think a vote and a discussion at the twenty seconds would be good.
Alright, anyone else wanna enter in with, with an opinion on this?
I would be interested in looking at it and talking about it.
On the twenty second?
If, if we have time at that meeting yet.
Alright, well, make time for that, right?
Yes, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, we certainly can, um, my, um, I wonder if, um, we, I, I, I would recommend that staff bring forward to like current state, so, you know, we could talk about it high level philosophically. But it might be informative to the board to hear like what it looks like right now, like we could bring information to you because. Uh, we are now operating with, um, cellphone policies in our schools at the elementary, middle and high school levels. And we certainly can bring back to you maybe some data, some other information, maybe testimonials, just to maybe inform, um, your thinking. And so, just a, just some thought I had, uh, before like taking a vote on like a position, uh, especially with the bill, and that would be your recommendation.
That'd be wonderful.
I've been asking for that for years, so that would be great.
Um, the other thought I have around timing of it is that. Um, it sounds as if, you know, I mean, in the next few weeks it could change, and then as feedback comes through, you know, I know CASB makes recommendations and there's.
It could.
Ton of other groups that look at it that make recommendations, so, um, I do wonder when the best timing is, and I don't have a good sense of when that is, since this is our first time doing this kinda thing.
Yeah.
So, I'm just kinda putting that out there as well as if this is something that, um, might be better to talk about later, once we know it's conscious and edits. And it sounds as if there's some consistent concerns with it in its current state, that would be much the only thing I wonder, and I.
Mm-hmm. Good idea, I would.
Alright, and I certainly understand that, and that's why I ask you if you wanted to kind of get in on the ground floor with, with opposition, or if you wanna wait. Until after it's actually introduced and has had, um, a chance to be discussed and so on, um, and then come back to it at, at that point. I, I think that's, I think that's a valid suggestion.
But can we still, like with, like with Alexandra, can we still, maybe in January, have staff give us something so that we have some idea of what's even. Going on with the cellphone policies and with the different schools?
It is.
Alright, um.
I'd be, I'd feel more prepared.
To get the pun have any.
Should we do this then, Dr. Schaefer has an agenda item, or is this just information that would come to the board pursuant to discussing it later on?
It's really the board's pleasure, this, it sounds to me like it could be a good working session topic, so we have a meeting on the twenty second of January, but we also have a working session on February fifth, which is soon after. That might allow staff additional time to bring you something a little more comprehensive and then be able to discuss in real time. The other thing I would note is, before, uh, again, just to think about before reacting and responding to proposed legislation, uh, maybe wait to see what the legislation is before. uh, maybe wait to see what the legislation is before, you know, it may be brilliant, or it may be, uh, replete with some opportunities, and so, um, just another think about, um, but we can absolutely bring it to you, and so if it's, if it's at a board meeting on the twenty-second, typically it's one way, we're talking at you, we go down the line, everyone asks their one or two questions. If it's in a working session, it's more of a real-time conversation, so it's whatever the board prefers.
What you prefer?
I think, I mean, I think if every working session would make sense, and that would address some of what Dawn talked about as well, it would have actually been introduced by then, but potentially amended. I mean, it may, it may drop dead when it's first, it may be out of question by February, by beginning of February, but I still think it's worthwhile.
There's also a possibility that it could be withdrawn be- before January twenty-fourth, so I think that's a good suggestion, so.
And I'm so smiling at Theo because it's going right to school leadership, and he just gave an extra week and a half to.
Seals up.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so we'll plan then to receive the information later on?
We could, well, we could be ready on February fifth.
Okay, thank you. That takes care of that one. I shared this with some of you when we were at CASB, that I attended a session that was put on by, um, St. Braine Schools, as well as, um, let's see, Alamosa and Canyon City were the other two that were part of this. The latter two had used a curriculum and ideas that were, uh, that have been in place in St. Braine for about fifteen years. As I said, I talked to some of you about, um, a program in St. Braine that's called Leadership St. Braine. It serves to create community ambassadors, uh, and these community ambassadors over the fifteen years have disseminated important information about a whole variety of, um, topics, including bond and mill, but not exclusively bond and mill, in regard to curriculum, in regard to some things involving facilities and so on. About a hundred people per year participate in Leadership St. Braine. Many of them re-enroll after one year. Most of them are parents, but there are also community members. They have a curriculum that they are willing to share. Participants for this program come from, uh, the theater systems within St. Braine. The principals suggest participants. There are also opportunities for people from the community. The various sessions, they meet once a month during the day, uh, and the curriculum or the sessions are actually conducted by members of the administrative staff, so there's no cost, uh, connected with this, because these people are already on staff and on, on payroll. And what they've discovered about is that about ninety percent of their board members actually come from this group. So it's an opportunity for the community to learn about things, uh, at the ground level, and then become ambassadors out to the rest of the community. A couple of you attended the Douglas County Bond and Mill Committee Session with me. This is patterned after, um, Leadership St. Braine. It focuses on building trust and minimizing political differences in the community. They're very careful to involve people who are politically different on the committee. It's been in existence about three years. In twenty-twenty-two, uh, by the way, the name of this committee is Douglas County's Bond and Mill Levy Committee. In twenty-twenty-two, both the bond and the mill failed. This was about the time that the committee was formed. The following year, in twenty-three, the bond failed, but the Mill Levy override passed. In twenty-four, the bond passed as well. And the speakers said that they felt that it's the communication that was, that has been created by this group that's responsible for this. Again, no cost, uh, for the sessions, because they're conducted by members of the administrative team. And so where I'm going with this, and I've shared this with a couple of you previously, I think this is an excellent idea. I think this is something very important that other districts are doing, and that I would like us to do, um, as well. I've talked with Dr. Schaefer about this. I said if the board is on, if the board is on board, um, with doing this, is this something that has to happen as a result of a vote? And he said, "No, this is not actually that kind of a, of a matter that's coming to you." He said a thumbs up or a thumbs down is sufficient. I would hope that we would, uh, be able to get started with this as soon as possible. And I'm speaking to you now as an individual member of your board. I actually, I think, shared my excitement after I heard about it, um, with you. But I'm bringing it to you, um, and asking for your reaction to becoming involved in something like this. I'll go around this time. Dawn, can I start with you?
Yeah, so, um, I did go to the Douglas County one, and I, I like the idea of this, um, and I, I know that we've, we've tried to do that with our influencer groups, so it's, it's just like an expansion of that, and it's really, you know, like, broadening and deepening that. I also really like the idea of being able to, to do what we're doing with our study sessions, which would be all over the district. I would love the idea that this would be in different buildings, showing our highs and our lows, right? Because there is nothing like seeing, um, some of the challenges we have, as well as, like, the real stuff. Like, we could probably do that at every single building. Here's this great thing, and also, here's the roof that's leaking. Um, and so I do really like the idea that we would be including, uh, and showcasing so much of, um, what we do and not just in a classroom setting. Like, if we could do that too, I'd love that a lot, so thank you for bringing it out.
Stu, I'm gonna quick ask. Are you gonna ask people just to give an indication, or do they need to speak? Because we have a lot yet to do tonight, and I know that you have, you said four items.
I have one left.
Oh, okay.
We can do whatever you want to do.
Well, I just think, you just have to indicate if it's something you think is, is that what you were looking for?
Yes, actually, what I'm ultimately interested in is a thumbs up or a thumbs down, and when it comes to you, if you wanna just give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down, that's great. If you wanna make a short comment, is that fine? Okay. All right, so you're a thumbs up? Thumbs up?
I would like to know more about it. I'm neutral.
All right. Thumbs up?
I'm a thumbs up, but like, Alexandra, I would need more information, and I do think we should, once we decide to move forward on it, formalize, formalize some of the aspects, really.
All right. I understand.
Could you get us the St. Braine information?
I'm sorry?
Could you be able to get us the St. Braine curriculum soon or whenever?
I think probably Dr. Schaefer can, can get a copy of the curriculum.
I know the superintendent.
Yeah, and they've offered to help us in a variety of ways. They've also invited us to attend one of their monthly sessions to get a, a feel for, for how it actually works.
Yeah, let's get that on our calendars. I mean, matter of fact, it's gonna make it, obviously, but if we could, you know, imagine the next one is.
Okay.
We could.
I, I can check on that. Barbara, you a thumbs up?
Yeah.
All right, so Alexandra, coming back to you, um, you're neutral, you're not a thumbs down at this point. You'd like more information.
I'd, yeah, I guess. I don't know. I mean, I were, I was worried about, I mean, I think in theory it's a good idea, but I know we have, you know, sometimes trouble with recruiting people for other committees and endeavors, and we have trouble, like, with looking at the DOT Committee, we've had trouble, you know, recruiting a wide spectrum of people. So I wonder about that, and if we're trying to get a wide spectrum of people, or if we're only trying to get a subset of population, um, maybe it doesn't matter. The fact that it meets in the day, already you're cutting out a huge number of people who would other potential, otherwise potentially participate, which worries me.
I asked about that, yeah, and they said that the attendance was surprisingly high. They offer it both in person and via Zoom, and the people who view it via Zoom can actually view it later. And so they said that the attendance is actually very high for the sessions.
So, that's going to your next item, because everybody's giving you an indication.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna proceed with this then, all right? The last item has to do with, um, you received, um, and I'm not sure if you received this letter from the four executive directors once or twice. Was it sent out a second time, Dr. Schaefer?
Did we, no, I sent it out. I forwarded it to you.
Yes, all right, so, so you've seen this once. This is, this is the letter that has to do, um, with opposing Governor Polis's joint budget proposal, dealing with, uh, averaging, let's see, what's the actual term here? Eliminating student averaging, um, yes. So, um, what I want from you tonight, on behalf of my CASB report, is to find out if tonight you would like to adopt a position of opposition to Governor Polis's joint budget proposal. If you'd like to think about it a little bit more, if you'd like to discuss it, uh, further. So it's kind of like the first item, what, what do you wanna do with this information?
Is there a crunch timeline on this or not?
You may know this better than I would with your participation in CASE.
So, uh, there's still work being done, lots of runs on the budget.
There's lots of timelines.
I will tell you that even as recently as this week, there was another run. What is still remaining in the proposal is on the reduction of the, uh, student averaging, um, from five years down to four years, um, which, um, CASE, CASB, other organizations, um, your superintendent posed strong.
All right, so what is your feeling on this? Would you like to hold off on this then for a while, or would you like to oppose it?
So, based on what Dr. Schaefer just said, though, has the, has what he suggested changed in that letter than what you just said?
So, the letter speaks to, again, it's fluid, as you know. The budget is still, um, being evaluated with proposals. I would say if we stayed focused completely on the averaging or the reduction of the averaging, that would, um, that again seems to, um, persevere in, in what the, what is currently being proposed. But we have a lot of time between now in January and, like, June, uh, when it's gonna actually be formalized. So, I don't, um, I'm not aware of school districts right now that have taken a formal position on this yet, although I, I can tell you that many, many of my colleagues are, are act, like, doing what we're doing actively, talking and discussing it right now. As a, as a professional organization, CASE, CASB, for example, we've taken a strong position, um, as, as we shared in that letter with you.
I'll just go for, I, I would, I'm inclined to wait, because I know that on the, the law and bill, there's still, on the school finance, there's still a lot of negotiating that hasn't even started yet, so I don't even know that we would be taking a position on something that's.
Okay, very good.
Okay, I will keep track of this for us, and I will give you updates and bring it back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we appreciate it. All right, six point one. This is, um, twenty-twenty-three annual, Dr. He, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Act for Rusty. Smiling like that, and plenty of friends.
So, um, this, uh, we're, we're gonna, um, yeah, Rusty Williams, I have to come forward, and, and with him are some representatives from Plant Moran, um, to review our annual comprehensive financial report.
Thank you. Well, here's the sixty-nine thousand. Thank you. Found it, see?
Good evening again. As we talked about on our, uh, during the last board meeting on the eighteenth, this year we hired new auditors, Plant Moran, and they've looked at things with a much closer lens than, than what, uh, our prior partners were, were doing. And so, uh, we've uncovered some opportunities, and we've, uh, we've partnered with, uh, a division of Plant Moran to, to help us implement some new procedures and, and do some training, and, and they're gonna help us, uh, really shore up the grants area. But they're here tonight, and, uh, we're gonna talk about the, the audit. So Jamie Essenmacher, who's a partner with Plant Moran, and Keith Semetsky, who is a principal, uh, are here with us tonight to talk about the audit.
Great, thank you so much, Rusty. Um, so my name's Jamie Essenmacher. As Rusty mentioned, I am a audit partner out of our Denver office with Plant Moran. I lead our, um, public sector practice. So, we do have, I know that you've had a couple weeks with the documents, but we did prepare a presentation to kind of do a high-level overview of, um, our discussions tonight. So we will kind of focus on that, but if you have any questions on the documents, we'd be happy to answer them at any point in time. So, and turning to the first slide, so looking at the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four audit results. So for the financial statement audit, we did issue an unmodified clean opinion, so that's the highest level of opinion that we can provide as your CPA firm. It's essentially what you've hired Plant Moran to do. Um, the report date was December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four. This audit, the audit process with Rusty and his team started in June, and we finalized in December. So this was not originally in accordance with the agreement or the timeline that we had discussed when we met with you, Nancy. Um, it was about two months.
Me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Barb. Yep, sorry, two months past that, that timeframe.
Right.
We did have three findings as it relates to the financial statement audit, which I'm gonna go through here at the end of the presentation. So findings, when I use that term findings, it means that there was an internal control, um, deficiency identified as it relates to, um, various processes throughout the audit. So when we look at the single audit, so that is the federal programs audit, so the district receives more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in federal, ex, federal fund, or I'm sorry, expense more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in federal funds in the current year. So they're required to have a federal compliance audit. Um, originally, in our original proposal, we were anticipating testing one program through some of the findings and issues that were identified. It then moved to two, to three programs, so it was originally slated to see child nutrition, and that was what we were supposed to test. And, um, additional discoveries resulted in Head Start and the Corona State Virus and local fiscal recovery funds being, um, tested. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the programs tested. However, there were three compliance, um, compliance and internal control findings identified. So the district now moves into a high-risk audittee for the next two years, um, as part of that, um, those findings coming through. When we move to the next slide, so this is part of our required, so one of our deliverables to you is our required communications under auditing standards two sixty, so that's the required communication that we're required to do as your auditors to the districts those charge with governance. So when we look at the significant accounting estimates on the books, the most significant accounting estimate is the district's share of the para net pension and OPEB liability, so the, um, the para net pension OPEB liability, um, para was about three-hundred-and-six million dollars for the district at the end of the year, and then the OPEB was about seven-point-four million. Please keep in mind that those numbers are not on the funds, financial statements, so the general fund, and that does not hold that liability. That is considered to be on the government-wide statements, so there's some accounting terminology there, but just note, noting that it's a significant estimate. We work with Rusty and his team on that to, um, to, uh, work through the disclosures related to that, as well as testing the contributions and payroll for the district that goes, that goes to para. Um, there were some difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Um, those would include key documents not completed, such as reconciliations, levels of review, um, the schedule of federal expenditures, and other processes and procedures. We did identify a number of accounting adjustments. Um, there were some corrected and uncorrected misstatements, primarily related to revenue as it relates to, um, the, the revenue adjustments identified in the, in the state and federal side. And then there was a couple past adjustments identified. So when I use the term past adjustments, that means that they are considered an immaterial adjustment, um, that was identified, that we talked with Rusty and his team on, and then they made the conclusion that due to the immateriality, they weren't gonna change anything as it relates to, um, recording that, uh, but we are required to record those to governance. So we did identify one of those as it relates to the treatment of capital assets and how those are analyzed in accordance with a capitalization policy. There were no other, um, significant items or matters, um, identified as it relates to that. So I'll pause there, um, for a moment before I turn it over to Keith to go over some financial statement, um, general fund highlights for any questions.
What's your preference?
I don't know.
Um, I'll, where do we live off? I think it's, um, Amy starting, is that?
I don't know.
Okay, Stu, you start us, if you got one.
All right, um. Alright, um, on page twenty-five of the audit report, which is dated December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and I didn't write down the entire sentence. It said that the audit, uh, revealed that practices were done in accordance with accounting principles.
Hmm.
Um, because I don't have a background in accounting, what that says to me is that, um, the deficiencies that you're talking about now were not considered when that statement was written. Now, again, keep in mind, I don't have a background in accounting, so I'm not going to be offended if you correct what I just said. So go ahead and respond to what I just said. I was surprised after reading that statement, that the work was done in accordance with accounting principles, than to hear about the deficiencies. So can you explain to me what I don't understand?
Yep, so we're required to, like, we audit and the district is required to report under accounting principles. So when we come in and make corrections or the items, some of the deficiencies that we're talking about don't necessarily relate to accounting transactions. They relate to potentially at times internal controls, some relate to accounting transactions. But also we can, I can't issue my opinion until they're in accordance with accounting principles. So all of the adjustments that were identified in the process that we went through with the district now allows me to put that statement in my opinion.
Alright, let me ask you a follow-up question. So are these, um, regulations or requests that your company, um, believes should be present and the previous auditing company did not?
No.
No, no, what?
Um, no, they're not Plant Moran's requirements. They're what the district's required to follow in every governmental entity in, in the United States.
Alright, I'm trying to ask this question without throwing a, another firm under the bus, uh, but I'm gonna go ahead and say this anyway. So is it possible that the previous auditing firm didn't consider these issues red flags? I, I'm going back to this in accordance with accounting principles, it appears to have been done, so I'm.
I can't speak to what another firm does.
Okay.
Amy.
No, I'm doing it.
Questions?
I.
Um, I, 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 I don't know if I have questions but comments, um, so I do have an accounting background. Um, I, and again, I went back and looked at previous audit reports just to see if I, and, and there was nothing in there. And to help you, to what she's saying is, they discovered all of these internal control issues, these misstatements, these things that needed to be corrected. After all the corrections are done, then your financial statements are now in compliance with, I don't know if it would be GAAP, it probably would be CASB, but, um, so in seeing this on the internal controls, the biggest question that I have tonight is not so much on the financial audit report, it's on the internal controls because they're identified as material. Um, and it sounds like part of the increased cost is because now we're going to engage you to help overcome or identify. Is that just on the grant? Because what I wanna make sure going forward, especially because this is what we have to represent to the taxpayers, that our finance department has the right amount of, um, personnel that they need to make sure that we stay in compliance with our internal controls. And I know that some of the smaller companies, I've been on them, it's sometimes it's hard to have the separation of these, so you have to get really creative. But I guess what, is that, or is that part of the increase fee is you're gonna be working with Rusty and his team to help identify more personnel we need or where we need to correct the policies or the procedures?
Um, that increase fee does not have anything to do with that.
It's totally separate, okay. So does the finance department, did they have a list of recommendations or Rusty, like, and again, Rusty, I'm so sorry, I know you're in the.
It's okay.
Um, what is the plan to move forward to ensure that we can address these eternal, internal controls? And just everybody, the internal controls, just, it's like, think about in medical, you have certain protocols that you have to follow and people that double check and this and that, accounting has the same thing. And so we have situations where in accounting, we have things that did not have the right oversight, the right double check, the right timing. And so I'm just, what's our plan to address that? Because I'm sure it doesn't affect just grants, it probably affects mail-in, overriding, everything.
So we have an interview scheduled tomorrow morning, uh, we're interviewing three candidates for a grants position that we have posted. And we also engaged, it, it's a, a separate division against a Plant Moran. So they're independent from the audit group, um, to help us with grants. And we had our first really in-depth call with them this morning. And then they are coming to, uh, to the district office next Wednesday, uh, to spend some time with me and, and our one grants person and with Todd Pecconi. Um, we, we've given them a list of, of items that we want them to address and to help us with. And so, um, those are the two things we've done. But we've also had discussions about hiring more staff, um, a, a staff accountant in particular, because we've got one senior accountant and, um, we have no bench strength. We don't have anybody that we can assign a project to. Um, and so we, we realized we were stretched thin, but Plant Moran has identified more opportunities. Uh, for example, on, um, the bank reconciliations. Our senior accountant does those bank reconciliations and she's meticulous. She will spend all day trying to find three pins. Um, and we don't have a, a formal process in place where I sign off on her reconciliations. Where I look at her work and look at the bank statement and say, yep, everything ties. We, we just weren't doing that. And that's one of their recommendations to us is that we have someone do that. And another example is, is one of the ones I brought up during the last board meeting. Um, labor is a significant cost to the district and a lot of this grant money goes to cover salaries and benefits. And Plant Moran was expecting to see a more formalized review process to make sure that the grant managers are reviewing the, the staff list that's being charged with their grant. And we, we have, we had that process in place, but we didn't have it documented. So, so what Plant Moran has suggested is we, we have a, a meeting on the calendar, we have an agenda for that meeting, we have notes from the meeting and we have Landman Carroll's signature, for example, signing off saying that yes, he reviewed the, the list of the twelve employees who were being charged with Head Start grant and they were appropriate. Those are the things that we didn't have in place, that we're getting, that we're getting put in place.
And so on the accounting adjustments, is that part of it too, like where somebody who would make journal entries, that there's not a process to, to approve it versus who's entering it, is that also what was?
Uh, no, no, we didn't have that issue with the journal entries because we do have a process in place where, where I approve every journal entry and I don't enter any journal entries. So n- not so much that, but these adjustments were related around grants, related to grants. Because we were, we were recognizing income that we shouldn't have been or we should have been, um, we should have been booking deferred income. Uh, we should have been, uh, booking deferred revenue. Um, and so it, it's really around timing and, and, um, I guess making sure that we're recording revenue in the correct period.
So it's more about just the natural changes?
Yeah, I think the reconciliations being put in place and processed on like a monthly basis and of having like people review them and making sure that there's two sets of eyes on everything. A lot of the times, in most cases, there's one set of eyes. So I think it just puts everybody as, within a background, like, at risk. And we, I've talked with Mark about just putting the district at risk if something were to happen, if there's only one set of eyes going through or if there, things aren't being reconciled. And I think that's kind of what has come out in here, but all the adjustments that we proposed were made.
There are.
Were, of course, were made and I think for a district, I talked about this with Mark as well, for a district of this size, the finance department is very lean.
I hope.
And, um, well, you can get creative in certain situations.
If there's a moment.
Yeah, um, or it's just too big.
So I would, to the rest of the board, I would be, I would be supportive of, and I know that it wasn't probably, it's not in our budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, but I would strongly recommend that we look at bringing in and hiring the FTE that we need for the finance department because no company, doesn't matter if it's a school district or manufacturer, it's only as strong as its finance department. And if its finance department isn't strong, then it just, it gets, goes throughout the rest of it. So I would highly encourage, recommend that we bring, we get the staff that we need.
Alright, I s- I appreciate that. Let me provide just additional piece of information. Um, we are in the process right now, uh, hiring, uh, as I shared with you, um, um, Rusty, uh, great opportunity for him. And so we are, we have posted, um, for a, 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 a new chief financial officer. Uh, and so that position closes, uh, on the twelfth of this month. And then we will begin immediately screening on the thirteenth and then soon after, hopefully if we, um, find our preferred candidate, the board approves. I would love to get a new chief financial officer into the, into the role in order to make, um, kind of an audit, an assessment of our needs and then make a formal recommendation to the board. Um, I, I agree, like, we, Jamie and I have talked about this, w- we need support. I just wanna be tactical in terms of, it is prudent in terms of how we provide that support. And I thi- I know you mean that too, but, um, so I just wanted to give you a, a timeline in terms of what that looks like. We're also onboarding, um, a very talented, uh, new director of business finance that individual starts on the thirteenth. Uh, that will be, um, taking Rusty's position. So we have, um, and then, and as Rusty shared, we are hi- uh, in the process of hiring a new grant, um, person as well. So, um, that would be my ask of the board and this is certainly a priority. Um, in the interim, and I think this will be part of the presentation as well, Plant Moran, um, will be supporting us in, in kind of our immediate needs of just with reconciliation, um, and compliance around, uh, grants as well as maybe some other smaller projects.
Okay, you can. Question?
See. You actually just answered it, which is essentially that, um, making sure that we've done what we needed to do for the clean bill and that we also have a plan to keep going through with a fine tooth comb, because we know you only started with one and touched three and that's a fraction of what we actually have. And so it's nice that there's a se- fresh set of eyes. Um, the first time we did the Sorban's Oxley audit that I was part of, we had, um, twelve hundred findings in my company. That was approximately the same size. So three, fucking ecstatic now, let's keep that up.
Okay, we started with Stu, so, right, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Go ahead, Q.
Okay, I'm gonna take over with slide number four.
We've got a few slides, um, summarizing the financial results for the general fund as of, for the fiscal year. So starting here with a graphical representation of the balance sheet, we've got the assets on the left totaling seventy-three million dollars. The liabilities on the right totaling thirty-three million dollars. As you can see, the total assets are, are largely cash and investments, so it's a very liquid amount of, of assets. And that seventy-three million dollars is a twenty million dollar increase from the end of the previous fiscal year. Liabilities, however, have also increased by about fourteen million dollars. The primary reason for both increases was an over-distribution of property taxes from layer of our county, um, just prior to the end of the fiscal year, which was recognized, um, later in the summer and then rectified in July and August. So that is the reason there is more cash on hand and more liabilities. The, the school district was holding cash that was owed back to the, to the county as, as of June thirtieth. But overall, assets did exceed liabilities by forty million dollars, which is the fund balance in the general fund. And we'll see that summarized later as well. Moving on to the next slide, we're comparing twenty twenty-four revenue compared to the previous fiscal year. Twenty twenty-four's revenue of nearly two hundred and eight billion dollars was a fourteen million dollar increase, about a seven percent increase. Intergovernmental revenue, specifically shared revenue from the state was down slightly, but there was a significant increase in property taxes, nearly a twenty-one million dollar increase in property taxes, which drove the overall increase. Next slide is a similar presentation for expenditures. They were two hundred and one million dollars for twenty twenty-four, which is an, about a eight million dollar increase, or about four percent. As you can see, each of the categories remained fairly consistent with twenty twenty-three, with support having the largest increase in many of the categories. Then finally on slide number seven, we've got a five-year history of fund balance in the general fund as of each, um, fiscal year end. From twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three, it remained fairly consistent at around thirty-four million dollars. Um, but because revenue did exceed expenditures in twenty twenty-four, um, there was a fairly sizable increase in fund balance, about six point two million dollars, which brought the total at the end of the year to just on your forty million dollars. That, I'll turn it back over to Jamie to close things out.
Keith gets all the easy ones. So just rounding it out, I don't think we need to spend, we kind of just talked through this in the beginning, but we did just wanna provide, um, a similar, you know, so here's kind of a layout of the financial statement findings. So the top portion is within, so within like the, the financial, so not the federal programs. Um, but it would talk about some of the things, the themes that we talked about, audit adjustments, um, uh, segregation of duties, the twenty twenty-four zero zero three, so that one is kind of unique. Um, we identified an, an error in the prior period set of financial statements when we were, um, onboarding the district, like, into our, as it relates to, like, their paracalculation. Um, so that's the, however, the error that was identified was not within the, like, in the fund level statements. So it's not on your day-to-day operations, it existed on the government-wide statements only. But it was a significant error. Um, and we worked with Rusty to get that adjusted as well as some other revenue items that were identified in the prior, there was errors. So that one is very unique, um, not expected, like, it's fixed, I guess, essentially. Some of the other ones, obviously that comes from the district to get it fixed and work on the plan that we've discussed. But I did wanna just highlight that because that's pretty unique. And if you read through it, you were probably like, what does this mean? And that's a lot of money and it was a ver- it was a forty-three million dollar adjustment to the, um, prior period net position.
And, and if I could, that is the one calculation that the auditors did for us. That was a calculation performed by our prior auditors.
Hmm. They made that error then.
Yeah. So with, when it comes to, so when it comes to the federal programs, some of the stuff that Rusty has already talked about, but again, kind of that theme there of just someone reviewing information that's being submitted or, and maybe it even, that those reviews are out there, but having them documented and, and having, being able to have a granting agency or an audit come in, auditor come in and be able to identify and like test through those. Um, and then with the coronavirus state and local funds, there was some compliance items related as it relates to the procurement policy, which we've talked with Todd about, um, 'cause this affects, the procurement policy and the applicability to that affects all federal grants if you're going to be purchasing through the compliance, including that, the bus grants that, um, was discussed earlier today. So and the suspension environment, like, all of those requirements, if those grants are federal or any grant is federal, are all subject to that. So getting some of those items in place and, and updated and, um, will, will help all around the general grant management program. And so, um, working with Rusty and, and the new person and as well as Todd to make sure that those are in place and kind of having our team get in there and start doing some reconciliations and getting everything to date is, is the plan. So we, we definitely feel, I would also like to say thank you to Rusty. Um, we put him through a lot, um, and we, it, it is a heavy lift of what we ask and three single audit programs is a very significant lift. So, um, I think he's done a very good job and thank you for all your assistance in, in getting that done and, and out the door and filed timely. And, you know, we do really appreciate the collaboration with the district and I know it's been difficult, but I think going forward, it's, it's a good plan and hopefully, um, corrected going forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I know you have a very packed agenda, I'm just shaking my head.
We have to start with Amy this time though, so we'll, we'll hang, we'll just be, we'll be back.
Uh, I'm almost all hang on.
Alexandra.
Hmm.
Nice. Nancy?
Um, I just have, there's just some general numbers that really doesn't have anything to do with the auditors that, um, I think we need to save for later. I would just close with, I, I know how hard it is to do audits, and I know about when I've gone through and that auditors like, this doesn't work, you know, can you find, can you, can you explain it or else we're gonna have to expand? I, I would go, I would do whatever I had to do to find, because now, like you said, we're in a two-year high-risk audit, which means going forward, there will always be the sample size, I'm assuming that's now gonna always be larger.
They don't.
But great, great job.
Thanks, Stu, back to you.
Okay. Should I assume that the deficiencies that you've identified have been ongoing as opposed to happening just this particular financial cycle?
Rusty.
They were found, um, in this particular audit.
That's a good assumption. That, that's a difference. We had a different audit firm come in and perform the audit, and then they did a much more thorough review than what our previous auditors. All right. I wanna share with you why I am sitting here looking so surprised. Um, Alexandra, I don't know in your current position as treasurer, if you've sat in on, on any of the meetings of the, of the, uh, audit committee. Did, did that group meet since you've been the treasurer? I was previously the treasurer and represented the board at those meetings, which included accolades for the district from the previous auditing firm for the manner in which business was conducted in the Thompson School District. And so, when I saw and heard the initial information, I thought, wow, I'm listening to you now. Uh, let, to be sure you might believe what you're saying. Um, I'm very surprised because having been in the position of being in those meetings and hearing what I heard in terms of the quality of work that was done, and the accolades and the awards that had been given, this is a real surprise to me. I think that's probably all I need to say.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Can I, just one more quick thing, so, um, as Stu mentioned, the audit advisory committee, uh, Rusty, you can share.
We have a meeting scheduled next Thursday on October. All right. Alexandra's now the, the treasurer, so, yeah.
And so typically, what we would do at the full meeting on the twenty-second, and you guys can decide as a board what you want, but we've already, so that the first couple slides that I would present, the first slide, but some of the, the end of the audit letter items and these items, I wouldn't go into anything, they wouldn't be included in the presentation, and we would just present financial statement highlight results. So that's really up to you guys how and what you want at the full meeting, and you can just let me know, Mark.
We'll talk to you.
Yeah, just, so just let me know, um.
I think we should be transparent, um.
So, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna take a short break, so that we can all get up and move a little bit, we've been sitting here a really long time. So, let's say, back here by seven twenty-five, that gives you a chance to get up and find Rusty or whatever you need to do.
All right, the next item is, um, potential picture bond real discussion.
Sixteen minutes.
Todd.
Well, uh, we can, we, not president, we can, uh, go as long as we're short as we like. Um, so the agenda for tonight is after we reviewed, uh, a lot of this material, um, in December, there's some updated, uh, data that was requested, so that's some election data that you see. We went through and then did a little more detail on some options, and then the goal of tonight is really have, um, discussion to get to a point to where, um, we have some direction moving forward. So, if we go to the next slide, um, what we did is we took all the, uh, creas- precinct data from, uh, the county and really created heat map. So, what this is, this is, uh, all counties throughout the district, and heat map, meaning red, is pretty solid no, to green is pretty solid yes, and then the colors in between, so, um. So there's a lot of information in this, between this slide and the next slide. What you can see is between five A, five B, they're pretty similar. Uh, you can see the central core of the district between really where Berthod is, up to Loveland, you know, was more weighted towards the, uh, favorable. When you get the outskirts and then the north side of the district and east side of the district, um, it was not as favorable. So more of that hot red, which means that there was, um, I would say, little support. So, you know, when we talk about what to do with this, um, you know, depending on our next steps as a district, when we look at this, we can then look at where we need to focus efforts more, um, to say, okay, we're not gonna go downtown Loveland. We're gonna go focus here and here, and here's really where our challenge, um, our challenges are. So, this provides literally the foundation for some strategic communication and outreach moving forward. So, you can see where we, uh, hit the mark, and then where there's opportunities and then additional, um, outreach that, um, you know, we need to reach it to. So, both, um, five A and five B are reflected here, as I mentioned, pretty similar. And then the other thing we looked at that the board requested was just really our website, you know, how did it do, what did it do? Um, you know, in totality, when you look at the amount of voters we have in Laramie County, this is not, it's very minimal, I mean, by percentage, it's, it's almost nothing, I mean, it, um. So, again, between last slide and this, this slide compared to the next three, what it does tell us is there's other ways and things we need to do to get the information out. Um, you know, no matter what information we have out on the website, if it's not being utilized, it doesn't matter, so. So it, it was, it was a good reflection, and thanks to the board for, um, requesting this, because it did provide additional insight for us to say, okay, um, you know, this isn't one spot that, you know, we can, we need to find another way in different ways, and that's what we're working on, uh, always. The next slide it shows, which is interesting, just the dates it was hit, so it's really when the board voted. You can see there was a, and when I say a big, I mean, you're only talking to seven hundred people. Um, and then towards election time, there was four to five hundred people, so it wasn't, again, same sort of data, um. There was interest in those areas, it just wasn't that much. So, but it's good to see that during those two time streams, those are the hotspots of when the community or these individuals are looking at it. The next slide again is just for kind of the data, the summary of what the, what, what the website has. So you can see really twenty-six hundred, uh, unique visitors. Um, again, the county of our size with thirty voters and a hundred thousand, um, yeah, you can make any conclusion you want, but that's, that's the data we have in front of us. So, without spending too much time on, um, you know, what we had in the past, moving forward, there was two things we talked about in December. Um, there was a no tax impact, and then tax impact, and then special levy. So, the, um, spot we're in is still the same, you know, we didn't, we, there's a little more detail we'll go through here. We just have to get to point to strategically understand what are the next best steps. So on the next slide, what we did is say, okay, if we plan for amount of a hundred million, um, it assumes an assessed valuation of seven-point-five percent. And this came from our, uh, bond council, so these numbers, they helped us, you know, my accounting, uh, knowledge is growing, but, uh, there's people out there that really, that do this really. Uh, so they helped him up with, okay, this is a pretty safe, um, estimate. If we did go for a no tax impact, we could plan around a hundred dollars. That may adjust up or down, you know, as there's highlights moving forward, but for planning purposes, a hundred billion was what we looked at. Um, and just the note in the slide, again, twenty-five is the last time for the no tax increase. If you go to the next one, we can see what that would include. So, basically what it does, it, um, limits the, or decreases the work in Berthod for growth. So it takes and it only does, um, the capacity needs at Ivy and Berthod. It does not do anything for Turner, which when we look at the significant needs and the, you know, needs that are flashing red, Turner isn't right now. What's really right now is Ivy and Berthod, especially in the next, uh, two, three years. One thing I will note is Berthod, um, the growth is not as exponential as it was four years ago, so it's actually class toning and more steady, which is good. Um, but we looked at Berthod's growth last year, I think it was only four students, you know, so it's good because it's kind of, uh, helping the hotspot, that, um, you know, it's, it's helping us stretch it out a little bit. So that's forty-two million, the other piece, a little bottom up, uh, security, so that's still one piece that, you know, we'd recommend as a piece that, um, is very important for this. Um, and then maintenance needs, so that's really just critical needs. So that's just the things that when I reference Loveland Highs roughly, it's the things that are really, that's really broke right now. So there's thirty-eight million of that. And then there's different enhancements throughout the district in other government schools, that really is what this, um, that thirteen million is. It's, it's not the CT, it's not the air conditioning, so it's not the pieces that, you know, our initial survey came out and said was favorable. Um, with a hundred million, you can imagine, when you take the two-twenty down to a hundred, it cuts all that out, and this is really just the bare bones, um, to hit the true critical needs we have right now. So the next option, uh, we have is really to stay with what we already, already presented to the board and the community, and that's, uh, the same two-hundred-twenty million dollar plan with growth, security, enhancements and maintenance, but just more of that. So, when you look at education enhancements, that's providing air conditioning in our schools, that's CT enhancements, you know, the things that the community, um, voted or asked, told us that they, that it was favorable. So when you look at what that looks like, um, if in twenty-five and twenty-six is, next slide. Uh, so if we assume, oop, one too many. If we assume a ten percent growth, um, two-hundred-twenty million in twenty-five, it would be about a nineteen-dollar impact for, per a hundred thousand. So I, I like that because there's really two things to, as we talk through options and what to do next. So that's in twenty-five, so really, when you take that down to a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home, it's seven dollars-ish, um, seven dollars-ish a month for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home. So if we wait until twenty-twenty-six, um, that impact then increases because the levies going down, so we have to increase the levels more. So the impact would actually be, um, you'll see twenty-nine dollars for a hundred thousand or twelve dollars a month. So, you know, I think it was good for the board to see, cause last time we were talking about is twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, those are just, that's the difference, um, waiting between the twenty-five and twenty-six year. So going forward, this is really the, the same thing we've seen before, um, this is what was recommended for the special levy. So same dollar amount, an approximate, same tax impact, um, but when we look and go forward, you know, this is more of a, um, strategic piece to talk about, how do we weave in a special levy, um, with either option you have a no tax or tax. So there's not really that much that's changed here. Um, and the next slide is really the conversation that we need to work through here. So, you know, we, we have some common things, so we, we know we need, uh, we have a significant need. There's a no tax impact, tax impact, in a special levy. Um, you know, thoughts or recommendation is there's either no tax impact in twenty-five versus a tax impact in twenty-five. Um, and then also is how do you weave in, and when is the right way to weave in a special levy? Um, so that's the presentation. I know last time we talked quite extensively about all this, and hope today was to come back and provide a little more detail, and then see what we can do about, yeah, thoughts on the board in the next steps moving forward. Mark, are you having else, or?
Yeah, we're, we're really at a, um, at an, an important juncture, uh, to, to make a decision. Um, because, um, and a decision could be to wait, uh, until twenty-twenty-six, a decision. Um, but if we are gonna go in November of twenty, of this year, um, we need to, we s- we need to make that decision. Um, and obviously, we're not gonna take a formal vote tonight, but we, um, we, we are, we would be seeking board direction this evening, and that's why we wanted to bring it back for you. The other thing, just to be, just to think about, and again, I, I think it's, um, the word strategically weave in a special levy initiative, it's, it's a, it's an interesting challenge. Uh, if the board decides that, um, a no tax increase is the way to go in twenty-twenty-five, and by the way, you get that one ch- one shot at it this year, if you go then and say, okay, we're not gonna, we're going for a, a no tax increase, and, but we're also gonna go for a special levy that is a tax increase. And so, um, it's, it's just to think about, because then voters will see two initiatives, one that doesn't, isn't, doesn't raise taxes, and one that, that clearly does. Um, Todd and I also wanted to just create space for the board to discuss this first, and then we can share, um, some additional thinking, um, that we might have, but we really would love the board to weigh in on this.
Okay. Okay, wanna give this, just go around again?
All right, um, I guess it's not, first time around, let's just give our reactions to it, and then we can go back around if we need to, to do some clarifying. And I think we start with Alec, no, with Amy. Did we do Amy? No, Stu started us with, uh, yeah, so Amy, you can start us with your first impressions or your gut reaction, and then we'll go from there, it's entirely up to you.
I guess my gut reaction is, um. That's my gut reaction. Um, you know, we go again in twenty, t- this year, twenty-twenty-five, um, you know, our needs haven't changed. We, you know, we need to continue to ask the voters. Can be good.
Alexandra?
I think our, I mean, in my mind, our best and most likely to be effective option would be the no tax one in this, this year, which I know is not nearly as much as we need, but it's better than your.
Nice.
I like that we're doing this early and have a live conversation, so that if we do go.
You shysted, Cora.
Um, into a lot of our, we can't, then, can't decide in August, we convince enough people to, to, to vote yes, so, uh. I don't understand what does, seems like the, is you gonna want me to try the last one, by no tax increase? You know, what doesn't get done that only becomes a bigger problem.
Nancy?
Um, I still stand by, I don't think we should go until twenty-twenty-six. I have read all of the no comments, and I don't, I, I agree that we s- we have all these needs, but the voters made very clear that we are not giving them the information that they need to understand why they should vote yes. And I'm just, you know, everything that I heard at the Douglas County, Casby meeting, um, the financial workshop, I still go back to, I believe firmly that we need a budget finance committee so that we can actually go through and update, refresh the way we present our budget and financial reports, so that the actual citizens can understand it, that's part of our strive. I, I, I think it's a waste of time to just go for a hundred million, because that doesn't get us what we need, and we should go in twenty-six and do it right. Will it be, is it longer than I would like it to take? Yes, but I believe that that is the best way, that's my opinion.
My thought is that if we don't go again this fall, we're sending a message that we didn't really need it, and that we can get by without it, and I feel like we can't do that. I think we have to go again, whether we do the, the no tax decrease or the full amount.
All right.
We have too many needs to not do something. We have too many needs to not do something.
This is my response. Done.
Um, I think the skinny version, um, with no tax increase, I mean, no, is most palatable. It's not just our data, it's everybody's data. Um, but then what we really like have to be doing in the year almost that we have is to talk about what we're not doing, right? Like, this is like me prepping my husband for the big expenses that are coming that aren't here yet. To say, yeah, I need this thousand dollars now to fix this thing, but by the way, that doesn't take care of painting the house, which is five grand, right? Like, I have to, have to prep him for some of that ahead of time. And so I think, you know, our our voters did also tell us how how some of this ha- didn't necessarily have anything to do with us. And so if we are coming forward with the most conservative ask, no tax increase, and then also very clear on what we can't do and what that means and what the pictures look like, I think that ha- that's the only way to make sure that long term, we don't cut off our nose to s- to s- to spite our face when we go for half of what we really needed to begin with. Um, and that does concern me, um, but I I think that if we put the same thing in front of them again and we do all the right things to say, this is what we need, this is the right thing to do, and it was, it's a responsible ask, I feel like it's a harder, it's a much heavier lift that I don't know if we can do. And that concerns me. Like, I feel like we could get the hundred million and that would get us, that would get us some of our highest, highest needs. And I think about for people who are making conserva- ex- like asking for conservative spending, us saying, okay, yes, like, we literally only did the highest needs. It actually buys us some goodwill for some of that feedback.
Stu? You have to.
Yeah, um, I think we should go for the two hundred and twenty million again. Um, I'm wavering as to whether we should also do the special levy. Um, Douglas County put a statement in there as part of the ballot language uh last November that there would be no tax increase if the bond passed. That was actually part of the language in the uh, the ballot measure. Could we include a statement, Todd, that in, uh, that part of the increase is offset by, I don't know what the correct terminology would be, but in an email that I wrote you and you wrote me back, you said, um, we can get some reduction in in an increase if we go in twenty twenty five, which will disappear in twenty twenty six. Um, the, the concern I have about going for the minimum is then, when do we go back for the rest of what we need? How many years do we need to go back the following year? I guess I'd rather see us do our very best job of communicating. I I have faith that this group, um, which as yet is unnamed, which we decided tonight, we want our administration begin working on, can help us um communicate, and we need to communicate that this really is kind of a bare bones ask. And so, uh, yes, I think we should go for the same bond amount that we did, and as I said, I'm kind of on the fence as to whether we try for the, for the, you know, the, the special.
Okay, we've done one round. Then do one more round of any additional thoughts you have, and hopefully, then we'll check back with Todd and see if that's any information. Okay, Amy. Anything more to add?
Maybe out of curiosity, and and you may not know it, I don't wanna, gonna push it, but you you did say you wanted to move forward with um, a bond, you know.
Yeah.
Would it be at the one hundred or the two twenty? That's what you were.
Right. I don't, I I'm undecided. I mean, I, you know, part of me feels undes- undecided.
Okay, um.
Would you be supportive of you?
Yes, yes. Check. Count, Zach. No more? Denise?
Stu? Based on the financial audit, we just, um, do we have, like, the starting point for that kind of transparency? Like, really communicating what we just learned, much more broadly than in assuming, well, no one's going to the website to see these things. So, you know, starting with the dialogue sooner than later. Um, and then building on the kind of transparency you're talking about, um, you know, fresh start, here's where we are, where's what happened, and, you know, then you can already start developing that report. Um, and then, I've had one question for over here, um, but eh, let me escape to me. So I do think we have an opportunity early for a win if we, and I think we should go, if we go, it it starts as soon as whatever this is finally comes.
Um, I'm just gonna, I I do not think that we are listening to the voters. We're not listening. They they do not have enough information. They have tax fatigue, so yes, we could do the no tax one, but that's like remodeling, um, half your bathroom, and then what do you do? Um, the webpage, it did not provide the kind of information that they were looking for, that I, that's pretty clear. And so I I just go back to, like, Greeley six, they were able to finally pass their tax re- um, increases that they needed because they took the time to redo the way that they presented the information. And it, and in talking with Deidra from Greeley with Dr. Schaefer, it wasn't so much that all of the voters went through all of the, the, you know, all of the pages, but it was also very enlightening and educational for the staff and the board to, that really made it clear. And so I just, I just go back to that I think it's a mistake to do twenty twenty five, especially given that the finance department has, we're verging a CFO, we're, we're, um, I, I think we have Dusty's replacement.
Rusty's?
Or Rusty, I'm sorry.
We do, that person starts, I'm mixed with.
So there's just, there's a lot of things going on in finance, and I don't know, I I just think we might, I I get it, we have the needs, but I think we should approach it on to show, you wait till twenty twenty six.
I think if we're, we are gonna go forward with it, I would like us to really consider all of those pieces that Stu talked about with that, um, whatever we call it, and we get on board with a group of people that we bring in right away, and we begin educating them on all aspects of what our expenses are, what our needs are, um, shared clearly, so that it's, becomes very obvious to the whole community um, that this is where we need to go, and that we, we can't afford to wait another year because of the cost of what it's gonna take to repair the things that are damaged. So, done.
I was thinking something very similar to what both of you said, which is that, um,
we, we are jumping on this, um, idea of getting people in- involved and getting them more informed. It's clear from what you provided us, which is really, really helpful, that people are not gonna go look, they're just not gonna take that extra step. Um, so we need to make sure that everything is so easy for them to, to have. Um, and and we know that some of that, there are levels of what people want, right? There are some people who want just a bite size, yep, that, I care about this and it's right in front of me. I know a lot of people were moved by seeing the ceilings falling in at Loveland High when we approved the last one. That picture was probably the thing that got more people to vote than anything else. And that wasn't what we put on posters, that was something, somebody just shared, and then it went out. And so, you know, a lot of that kind of moving people's needle type stuff, um, is gonna come out from us engaging community members, and and yet we also know that people do want that in-depth piece, and so with the ability to have more conversations, um, I think that'll help. I think because we hosted a lot of times, we said, we are here, ask us questions, and then a few people showed up. It's the same as asking them to go to the website to look it up themselves. Like, we have to go, we have to be there to do that. Um, and I do think that we have, like, everything that people are going to ask for, we have, we just need to make sure it's really bite-sized. And then this, I was also curious about, um, the wording that we would use if we did the no tax increase for five A, this, like, I'm using the same numbers, but, and then this, and then the five B. They're two separate things, so is there wording that helps make that more clear or not? Cause I know I did get confused by some of the ballot language from other entities figuring out, do these cancel each other out? Do I need to vote for both or not? I thought I knew, and then I got the ballot and I still trying to figure it out. And so I wanna make sure our stuff is clear with whatever we decide. So that whatever language we put does not add to the confusion, so people pick one or the other.
Stu, anything more to add?
Yeah, um, the ballot in last November was so long. There were people who told me that they, as they were voting, they just went through and anything that involved a tax increase or anything, they just voted no.
They said no. Mm-hmm.
Because the ballot was so long. Um, thanks Barb for what you said about, um, Leadership Saint Brain and the Bu- the Bond and Mill Committee from, um, Douglas County. In both of those presentations, the the person who was in charge, which was the superintendent, said they felt that that the success of their bond and mill initiatives is directly attributable to the word that got out from these groups. Um, people talking to people that they knew, not going to a website, uh, people talking to people that they knew, living room conversations, et cetera, uh, the old-fashioned way that people communicated, they both said it still works in terms of when you're trying to convince people. And the other thing that I would remind us of, I remember the, um, the guy from Majowan, his last name is Winger, was it Ryan? I remember that he told us that in twenty eighteen, when the bond issue passed, that Oakwood Builders by itself, which is building and development, somewhere in the Loveland area, that builder itself contributed seventy thousand dollars to the Bond and Mill campaign. And having talked with one of the campaign chairs, uh, for this past election, they had a fraction, and I'm not at all suggesting that we wanna try to buy votes, because we can't buy votes. But to get the word out, um, it takes money. And, uh, knowing that people don't necessarily go to websites and so on, but people do look at mail that they get, they do look at signs and billboards and so on. So I guess, Todd, that would be something else, that if we do decide to go forward, do we have a a funding source, um, that will give a more sufficient amount of money to get the word out? That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Todd, that's a lot of information we've shared with you. What do you think now?
Well, my, I mean, we gotta take this in chunks.
Yes, we do.
So if we, so here's, right here. Um, because as Mark said, we need something to do.
Mark, can you get something to do?
So I hear most of the board saying, you know, there's favorability for going twenty five. I think whether we decide right now, if it's no tax or tax, the work around strategizing a plan, finding the right pieces, that was really the work that we're gonna do right now. Um, so, you know, we'd ask, that's what I hear, um, that that's the work we need to go right now, is figuring out, when you look at the data, the lessons learned, all those pieces. That's what needs to happen now to have any sort of shot of what we're all saying. I think we've all, you know, as you you talked about different things we need to do, that's things we've all talked about, and but that's really where we need to go, is figure out, okay, so come tomorrow, you know, that's the, that is a general census and direction. Um, the conversation around the no tax to tax, it's, it's tough. I mean, I, yeah, it's it's something we're gonna have to continue to work through. Um, but regardless, I think of what number it is, the messaging is the same. You know, that the messaging right now is still the same, so if it's, if it's a hundred, two twenty, um, messaging that we've started now is still around needs, you know, how we're doing, getting into the community in different ways, that's, that's really the work that needs to happen right now, um, to have a shot at being successful. So there's a point where we're gonna figure out that that step is saying which one it is, but, you know, when you look at the work in the, like, the near future, it's not around, you know, making the, them one hundred to two twenty, it's around the work we need to do, we gotta be in the community and show we'll show what we're doing, you know, the the transparency piece, all the pieces we talked about, um. Yeah, so that that's, that's about here. I don't know, Mark.
Yeah, um, I think we've received, um, some direction from the board this evening after what I, what I, what we haven't discussed is the the special levy, which, uh, and we don't need to make that decision right now at this, at this moment. Um, we certainly, I mean, we have enough direction to do, um, much more comprehensive work now. I would, because this is a, an extremely i- important decision, as well as I would say a time-sensitive decision, um, I, I, um, this is the second meeting that we've taken time, we'd, we we talked about this at our last working session uh, in in December, and now we're talking about it, it this, um, we may, um, we probably should consider a special meeting, um, to 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 really go deep into this and maybe even open up for public comment. Um, and just, uh, but but give, provide just a a really, because we're gonna need, so, we need direction. Like, I feel like we're on final approach, but the plane is not ready to land, like, the the wheels are, and so we need to be, I think our voters would expect, uh, this board to thoroughly consider and discuss and even provide opportunities for some input and feedback, knowing that we have a very compressed, in my mind, we need every day, week, month that we can get between now and November if we're gonna go forward, so it would, it will be a priority right now for for time is.
Okay.
Does that sound like a okay plan?
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do.
All right.
And that the work is a waste in either way.
Oh, absolutely, exactly.
Exactly, either way, we know we need to.
Right.
As much as possible for twenty six, in terms of.
Abs- absolutely.
Right.
It's gonna be the same conversation.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Todd. All right, we have one last item, and it can be very fast. It's, it's the one, and the only reason, wha- it's the policy B I D B I E, board members compensation, expenses, insurance liability discussion. And it's, the the policy is printed right there, um, if you click on it. But it, the only reason it came forward is a board member asked about reimbursement for, um, mileage driving down to Casby. And our policy clearly states that we do not do any of that. So all I'm bringing this forward and saying is that if we want this considered, we have to have a new policy or an updated policy on this. And so I'm just going forward because it it was presented to me, um, as is a possible, and I said it would be a change of policy. So that is why it's on our agenda tonight, and it's, uh, conversation around it, if you wanna take time tonight or if you wanna ponder it, it's not something that has to be done instantly. Um, it would be, an example would be like, if somebody goes to Casby fall meetings, they drive down to it, if we wanted to do mileage going down to our Casby conference, any of those kinds of things that you do pertaining to, um, our role as school partner. I think that.
Yeah, I thi- I think you stated it really well. Um, I would just add, there is space in the power. Yeah, I thi- I think you stated it really well. Um I would just add there is space in the policy for prior approval.
Oh, that's true.
Um so there is an opportunity. I would also submit that some board members are engaged so outside of Casby, some board members represent the board let's say uh down in uh like Casby events that may be down in like the metro area or even in Pueblo for example. And so that is not like PD or any of that I would say would be quote-unquote official business of the board or representation of the board. And I think to be compliant with policy um if the board were to prior approve that and say you know we are willing to compensate, not compensate but provide um remuneration for um mileage for example. That would be permissible under policy so I I think that's I I think the the genesis of this conversation and um um I I I don't even know if we would need to change policy per se but just be aware that the uh the board does have the authority and ability to um um
To put it.
To approve.
Prior, if it's prior and I forgot that little piece of the policy.
I guess when I read this I don't see that we need to change the policy. I mean it it says it's just remembering to do it.
No, just remembering to do the prior. Yeah.
We all had board approval to go to Casby. So if somebody needs mileage, they should just whatever the district form is to turn down.
It would be the approval for the mileage would have to done be done prior to.
The board would actually have to approve. It's not not the.
The board can approve it's not yeah.
Prior to going to Casby?
Yes.
Can can I ask like the way this is written, I didn't like I don't see how it's s- cause it's not laying out the specifics that say it must be approved on a individual basis one by one, right? Like
We could do a blanket.
Right, and so that's also what I'm wondering because when I read that
Mm-hmm.
you know like there is this blanket that says this are the kinds of things that are board business. It includes if you're on a Casby committee of this and that.
Mm-hmm.
It includes our driving around town to do the school visits or not, right? Like if we're saying.
I think we'd wanna be specific then if that's the case, yeah.
Yeah, because then we're not having to do a bunch of stuff every time. Instead it's these are the kinds of things that are really approved by us. And the the things that would be not on that list would be the things that we'd have to look at on a case-by-case basis without changing the policy.
So are you saying we need to include specifics?
No, I'm saying that we just need to we need to have a a working list that says these are the things we agreed to whatever you know to say it's these meetings, these meetings and these meetings
A working list.
but maybe we're not gonna reimburse for you to drive across town for your board meetings even though we would for staff.
Or it could be just a mindfulness that maybe a month before an event or something that if uh the board a board member or members were interested in seeking that prior approval, it's it's sought as prior approval.
What would that look like?
Um well I think it would fall under this policy. I mean the the board would just have to take formal cause you're not an employee of the district so and then we have policy explicitly saying you don't you know you know you don't get compensated unless there's a prior approval. I'd say that's what it would look like. It would it would just look like a prior approval of fill the blank. I'm representing the Board of Edge of T S D at a c- at a a Casby event where I'm a delegate um and I'm requesting approximately a hundred dollars in mileage or whatever or whatever the per gium or mileage.
Right, so it wouldn't be like an executive session in a meeting?
No.
It would just be the uh somebody submitting a piece of paper ahead of time.
It would definitely be an open existence vote.
Yeah.
And then we vote in majority.
Yeah.
When? Oh. Stu?
Um I'm the one who raised the issue and I'll I'll give you a quick explanation of what uh what happened.
Well.
Yeah.
Um when I went to the fall conference in Pueblo um I asked Laura Lee if she would make a reservation for me uh at a hotel to go and she did and so then after I got back I thought and I appreciated that I thought well I went three hundred and fifty miles on my own gas and in my own car could I also be reimbursed then for mileage? And that's that's when this whole issue was raised. Uh this discussion is helpful to me. It's clarifying. Had I thought ahead of time when I asked her to book the room for me to then say could I also then be reimbursed for my mileage? I would have. But uh for me it was kind of one thing followed another. Well, if you booked the room for me then I'm assuming you're gonna pay mileage. So I'm not disputing the policy. I just thought you might like to know what the background was for the issue being raised. It wasn't going to the Casby convention. It was going to this special meeting.
Mm.
So ma- maybe this is something that you could run by legal and ask them for some help with wording um
Sure.
that would actually uh provide some permanent clarification for the point. It's
Yeah.
this was this was an important thing for us to talk about even though it's a little thing so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just felt like if if we brought it forward before we talked about it, we'd understand a little bit more that it is a possibility.
Yeah.
And it's just prior.
Yeah, so thanks thanks for putting it on the agenda that we needed to talk about.
So do you want to like put it out there? That you know.
We make assumptions about like who can have this job based on policies like that.
Yep.
Not everyone.
No.
I mean
Yep.
That's right. Could cover their gas to Casby so it's it's a limiting factor when we don't make it easy for anyone in the community to be part of this.
Mm-hmm.
And so I do think um you know but we sit here, we serve as volunteers um but not everybody can do that.
And there's a lot of people in the community that assume we're getting paid for doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
And we all know that's not true.
Really?
You do get an occasional salad.
We get fed twice a month.
For the long-term standpoint, we do need to consider equity in and accessibility of being part of.
It's right.
Yes, that's an important point.
That is is exactly right.
Thank you for raising that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. All right, are we finished? I'm um gonna say this meeting is adjourned then.
Yeah.
Yes, been a long day.